We're ready for you. Is your volume on?
Yeah, it is on.
All right, everyone, can you hear me? Why don't we get this going? There's a lot of excitement in the room. So I'll call the meeting to order for April 19th, 2022. I wish honestly, so the first thing on the agenda, for those who don't attend often, is attendance. We have Council Broadhead, Council Killick, and Council Mackay in chambers. And I see Council Bromansky, Hughes, and Jolly online. I wish actually the three of you could be here because the view that I have is something we haven't seen in two years. And even before the pandemic, it wasn't this frequent that we had such a full house. And it honestly is just so amazing, especially because we're excited about certain. Congratulations. So thank you all for joining us. I need Council Mackay to make a motion to adopt the agenda. That's something he does every meeting.
Yeah, a little repetitive sometimes. That's good. At least I get my name in the minutes. That the April 19th, 2022 agenda be adopted as presented.
All right, thank you. Call for the vote. All right, voting is closed and that passes unanimously. All right, presentations. So we actually have a two o'clock specific with our auditors, but I'm going to make them wait for a bit. Because this is exciting and a little bit more important and a lot more fun talking to the auditors. We have, just so you know, we've got the Ringette team here, of course, to celebrate their victory. And then we're going to be having a proclamation on National Poetry Month. And we have our brand new poet laureate, Lauren Seal with us, and she's going to read a poem for us. And then we also have a number of you speaking about 22 St. Thomas Street. So that's going to be the order of the Ringette Poetry and then 22 St. Thomas Street. So, and that's just because that's the order that people signed up. And do we have Chris Schaefer? Is Chris Schaefer here? Mr. Schaefer, I'm going to ask you, do you want to speak at the beginning of the meeting? Or do you want to wait to the agenda item of the eScooters comes up?
Personally, I'd prefer to speak to the item when it's on the agenda and being discussed.
Hopefully, we're not as long as we were the last time. So I'll call on you when we get to that agenda item. All right, so let's talk Ringette. So we have the whole team or a lot of the team. Are you supposed to be in school, some of you? Just making sure. You know, I got an email from Luke Faven last week. So I saw it on Facebook and heard the news that you guys had won the national champions. And I got a message from Luke about a proclamation for Wednesday. And so we are doing the proclamation. I read the proclamation. It's been on social media, just so you could use it. But I will be at the rink. So that's Mark Messier at 8:00 PM Wednesday night. For anyone watching at home, join us for the celebration. But I said to Luke, why don't we have the girls come? And because this is just so special. So I'm really glad that many of you could make the time. Thank you for my jersey. I will return it on Wednesday because I wear it Wednesday, too. I was actually in The Ridge, the restaurant by Fire Hall 3 on Wednesday night last week. And the young Ringette player came up to me very shyly. Her mom actually broached me and said, my daughter's too shy to talk. But she's really excited about the banner raising on Wednesday. So it is excitement all over this community. So and that's because you girls have done such a great job. I know you've come close many times to the championship and now you've done it. And I have to say, mission accomplished. From the St. Albert Mission. So we'll be there. Hopefully, many of my council colleagues will join me on Wednesday to host that banner. And just letting you know, there's lots of room in Mark Messier for many, many more banners. If you are so inclined to do that. So why don't I just read the quick congratulations? And then I'll invite all of you down if you want to get your picture taken with council. And because we have a photographer here waiting. And I hear there's two captains in the room. Are they here? One shyly, two. Okay, if I ask your name, we probably won't be able to hear it down here in the mics. We'll pick it up. But when you come down, I'll give you guys your certificate and get your names. Okay? All right, so it's this really just read, St. Albert Mission, U-19 AA Ringette Team. Congratulations. On behalf of City Council and all the residents of St. Albert, I would like to congratulate the St. Albert Mission U-19 AA Ringette Team on winning the gold medal at the 2022 Canadian Ringette Championships. St. Albert proudly recognizes Ringette as the fastest game on ice, as exemplified by the St. Albert Mission's commitment, energy, drive, and enthusiasm as you flourish in the sport. Congratulations, gold medal winners, St. Albert Mission. And I heard it was a very exciting final game, that back and forth behind. So it's super exciting. So why don't you girls come on down? And we'll get a really great picture. And then the door is open here. If you don't want to go back upstairs, you can exit out here, too. So where are my captains? Yeah, we can go on both sides. And you're the other captain. Awesome. Is this going to work? Because if we can't, we can have some on the floor. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. You guys consent? Yeah. I'm sure your legs are much more, you can probably squat. That's good. Okay. So I was actually handed a mic. So I'm going to get the two captains to introduce themselves. And if you guys, you don't have to, if you want to say a couple of words, you can. You don't have to. Just introduce you.
Hi, I'm Danielle Verker.
My name's Reece Spanakis. And we'd like, on behalf of our team, we'd like to thank you for all the support.
For sure. This is more for us than you. This is awesome. Okay, so back and you guys can hold this chip kit and we'll get the picture. Where are we looking? Everywhere. There's a professional up there, but why don't we look at Luke while she's setting up? Honestly, sometimes the simplest gestures, and that was so fun and amazing. Awesome. All right, another awesome thing we get to do is is Poetry Month. All right, so a couple of years ago, I'm pretty sure it was the library that came to the city suggesting that we have a poet laureate annually. I feel like we've done it for four years now, at the beginning of last term. And it's been wonderful. I still always believe that we should probably include our poet laureate into more events and stuff. And I'm committed to trying to do that. St. Albert is such a community focused on arts and culture. And poetry is one of the arts that it's nice to recognize. So I'm going to read the proclamation. And then I'm going to say a few words about our outgoing poet laureate, Julia Sorensen. She's joining us online, I believe. Is Julia with us? I just don't see her picture. Oh, maybe. Okay, and then I'll introduce Lauren, and she's got something prepared for us, which is fantastic. So I'll read the proclamation first. So whereas the League of Canada Poets established the month of April as National Poetry Month. And whereas National Poetry Month celebrates poetry, writing, and the contribution of poets and all writers to the identity and quality of life in our communities. And whereas National Poetry Month encourages all cities to spotlight local poets in a variety of ways. And whereas these initiatives also celebrate libraries and the work of municipal leaders to promote literacy, reading, culture, and the arts. And whereas poetry enhances and enriches the lives of all St. Albertans. And whereas poetry, as an essential part of the arts and humanities, affects every aspect of life, including education and community pride. And whereas poetry has inspired our local artists as we recognize St. Albert's poet laureates. Therefore, I, Kathy Heron, Mayor of the City of St. Albert, do hereby proclaim the month of April as National Poetry Month in the city of St. Albert. So I'm going to, I saw Jeff is here. Am I giving this to you for the wall in the library? Yeah, I'll give it to you. No, I think you can, I think it gets better visibility in the library. So when, I'll bring you down in a minute and we'll get a picture. All right, there's Julia. How are you, Julia?
I'm well. How are you?
Great. Are you still studying abroad?
I am. I just finished my last, like, I just finished my dissertation, so free as of last week.
Good for you. Here today, and I just wanted to, you know, you know, I have it a little bit written down about your time as our poet laureate, because it's been fun. I would have loved to see you more often. It was unfortunate that you pretty much spanned the entire pandemic. But it did allow you to participate.
Precisely, actually. That was my term, exactly.
Abroad. So as our community navigated the past two years, we were inspired by bright, young artists that shared their work, brought joy, thoughtfulness, and evoked emotional responses in our daily lives. Some days, they shined a light on the pandemic using humor as we coped. And some days, they inspired thought and awareness of the difficulty many had navigated through solitude in shutdowns and restrictions. Outgoing poet laureate Julia Sorensen was such an artist, creating imaginative experiences through her written word. Her poetry included the sensitive piece for Sebastian, a suicide-awareness vigil poem. The vivid dream was featured at the poetry walk along our city's trails during the public library's trail tales. And she even created a poet cachet for the 2020 Culture Days in St. Albert. These are just a few of the many accomplishments we were privy to. Today, I, along with city council members, the library, and our community, wanted to thank you, Julia, for the dedication and commitment you brought to your role as poet laureate for 2020 and 21. And we wish you well as you complete your master's dissertation in arts management. So congratulations. Thank you. I don't know, Julia, if you want to say a couple of words. This is hopefully not the last time we see you in chambers. But this is a chance, and if you have any wisdom for Lauren, are incoming.
Very little wisdom, unfortunately. I wanted to extend my gratitude as well. It's been a really awesome experience, a really poignant one and interesting one to span COVID and also my masters abroad. It was a really excellent opportunity in a lot of ways. And I would, I suppose, maybe a little bit of wisdom I would share. Maybe it could be like to use the opportunities as exercises because they were very, like, the things that I did was also really helpful to expand my own practice. So yeah, mostly gratitude, entirely gratitude, and maybe a little bit of off-the-cup wisdom that's hopefully useful. Thank you.
You, Julia, it's awesome. And we do hope to see you back in St. Albert soon. And if you have any thoughts about maybe gaps that the poet laureate could have filled, whether it would have been Pride Week or Indigenous Days or something that we didn't include you in, just please let me know. I'm always open to improving the whole poet laureate experience. And I'm sure Jeff would be open to that as well, too. So thank you. And now, later on our agenda, although it's on consent, but we are appointing our new poet laureate, Lauren. So I've got a few words to say about her, even though she's not officially appointed until we approve the consent agenda. But I'm sure it will pass. On behalf of council, the community, and our public library, it is my pleasure to welcome Lauren as the city of St. Albert's next poet laureate. Lauren's poetry is accessible, charming, and playful. She writes in a way that is both approachable and moving. Once her literary work appeared on a beverage can, I'd like to hear more about that story. We are looking forward to seeing how her vision for bringing poetry to the community and conversely, having the community participate in the creation of her poetry further elevates the poet laureate program here in our city. Once again, welcome, Lauren, and thank you for sharing your work with us here today. So Lauren, I'm going to get you to come to the mic. And I do have a certificate, too, so I'm going to call you down. I'll call you both down and we'll get a picture. So welcome. Hope to see you lots in chambers.
Yeah, sorry, my hair is all caught in my mask. Yeah, I just want to thank you so much for the honor and opportunity of being your third poet laureate. And I'm looking up at the screen where Julia is extending my gratitude to you and just congratulating you on such a fantastic job. I got to see some of your poetry at the Jensen Lakes location, and it was beautiful. So I essentially grew up in St. Albert. My grandma lived here. She raised my mom, all my aunts, my uncle out here. And many of my cousins still live in St. Albert. So I spent basically all of my free time as a child out in St. Albert, vacations, holidays, weekends. So for my poem, I wanted to write a sort of love letter to my cousins, my grandma, and to St. Albert. It's called "The Puddle Jumpers." Grandma knew the best time to break out the galoshes was the sepia season between winter and spring, when the world was wet with mud. We deck ourselves in neon splash pants, rubber boots so rigid they blistered big toes. Race to the boulevard with puddles cast deep. We were cautious, reluctant to release a ripple. Not Grandma. She plunged in, soaking us in winter runoff and laughter, making us messy with joy. Soon, we were all stomping, splashing, sliding, kicking up streams of oily water that refracted rainbows in the afternoon sun. We came home mudcaked, drenched, small aquariums in every boot. But kids outgrow their galoshes, and grandmas do not live forever. Our feet fit better in leather flats and Oxfords, steel-toed boots, tenni loafers, weekend slip-ons, and evening stilettos, all unsuitable for puddle jumping. We abandoned the boulevard, didn't want soggy feet. Last week, shopping for light bulbs, I found a pair of Daisy print rubber boots. They pinched my feet, shaped my heels, made me sweat between my toes. I bought them immediately, bought them in case you also have pairs, hidden in closets, tucked behind grocery bags and old winter coats. We've been cautious long enough. I'm ready to plunge back into mucky bliss, aren't you? Thank you.
All right, why don't I have, I'll bring both you and Jeff down here and we'll take some pictures. Council, one more smile for the camera. I'll take off the ring it, so it's not forever. I'll take off the ring it, so it's not forever. Lost it. I know what's next. So the next on our agenda is the 22 St. Thomas Committee. And we have Dale Rokosch. Is Dale with us? There he is. And I hear you have a few slides that we're going to be able to see. And for those councillors at home, did you get a copy of the slides? They should be in your inbox. Awesome. We all ready to go?
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and councillors. My name is Dale Rokosch. I am a condo owner in the Versailles. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the neighbours of Lot 22 Committee. Mr. Skip Pickle, the Chair of this committee, is here with me in the gallery. He is a condo owner in Churchill House Number Two. Our committee prepared this proposal after learning more about the expression of interest for development in our neighbourhood that the city had issued to mixed-use developers. In this presentation, we are requesting city council to give thoughtful consideration to what we believe would be the best use of Lot 22 for all residents of the city. Are you seeing the screen?
No, we're going to get that fixed. I see IT responding.
Yeah.
Can we just pause the timer or is that possible? There we go. All right.
Who are we? We're the neighbours of Lot 22 Committee, representing 98 condominium owners from the four buildings to the south and southeast of Lot 22. DARP identified these four condominium buildings to be in Millennium Heights, the major residential district in the downtown area. There are two other residential condo buildings in Millennium Heights, south of Sir Winston Churchill, and four others in the downtown Perrin District.
I'm just going to pause again. Shaun, we're having a problem. Can't see the slides again.
We're still not getting them on the screen.
Well, they were up and now they disappeared. And I just want to make sure that you are given the opportunity to share what you've prepared.
It hasn't been used for two years.
Probably, yeah. Shaun, don't stress too much. I mean, we do have a copy, so we could manage that way. Oh, there we go. Don't move, Shaun. Okay.
Mary Heron, it's not showing up on the remote, so I'm not sure if the public's going to see it. I have a copy on my screen, like, I just pulled up a copy.
You can't show it.
For the, yeah, it may not be showing up for YouTube, is all I'm saying.
Yeah, it's probably better to put the camera on the speakers and you guys can follow along on on your computers with the presentation. All right, continue. I'm so sorry.
Okay, well, this was our first slide introducing our concept. And then describing who we are is the next slide, if I can get it to show. Yes, and there's 375 residential apartments in the downtown buildings in Millennium Heights in the Perrin District today. Many owners in the downtown area have chosen to relocate and live downtown because they value the city's focus on arts and culture and appreciate the vision the city has laid out in its plans for the future growth of St. Albert, contained in the DARP and Flourish bylaws. DARP shows Lot 22 to be in the riverfront district. Recommended uses in riverfront district include municipal government, civic gathering places, cultural activities, recreation. This plan states that development in this location should reinforce the downtown to be the civic and cultural heart of the city. The DARP plan showed a multi-level parking structure to be constructed on Lot 22 and possibly a boomerang-shaped municipal or commercial building to be built alongside on the island in the roadway at the junction of St. Thomas Street with St. Anne Street. Flourish, the city's municipal development plan, is an excellent document and bylaw that provides guidance for the redevelopment of the downtown area of the city. We began our search for a vision of what Lot 22 might contain using these nine goals and principles as our guideline and the permitted and discretionary land uses described in Bylaw 9, 2005. Our committee objective was to identify what new development for Lot 22 we can confidently recommend that will deliver the most benefits for all residents of the city. The development should satisfy as many goals and objectives described in the bylaws as possible that will define what the character of our downtown neighbourhood will be in the future. The development needs to be one that all condo owners in the downtown St. Albert will welcome into their neighbourhood. This prompted our committee to undertake a survey to see what we could identify, what this development could possibly be, considering the development will be in our backyard. Our survey of community needs identified how valuable Lot 22 is because of its unique location in the downtown district. As St. Albert grows, Lot 22 would be an ideal location to increase office space within sight of City Hall. We knew of at least three major organisations in the city that we could survey to find out what their needs are for them to be able to continue to grow and be successful. The St. Albert and District Community League, the owners and managers of the 82-year-old Community Hall on Perrin Street, they need to expand or find new ways to respond to a growing number of user groups in the city. The St. Albert Community Band, the Community Band is a 50-person adult group of musicians and they need to find a new facility for their practice sessions. The Community Band is losing its home base at Paul Kane School, where they have been able to hold their practice sessions since the early 1970s. The St. Albert Singers Guild is a 50-person adult choir and they use local school classrooms for its practice sessions. There are many other amateur performing arts groups in the city that have dancers, actors, and cultural performers in their membership that could be surveyed to gain a more complete understanding of the needs of these groups. Our proposal is a dual-purpose civic building on Lot 22. The Performing Arts Community Hall, or Patch as I like to call it, is a three-to-six-story performing arts community hall that will include space for civic offices on the upper floors of the building. This new community hall will be on the, in the heart of the summer street market. Existing mature trees in the parklight area beside the traffic circle will remain undisturbed on the west side of the building. Is this type of building, is this the type of building the city would benefit from by advertising an architectural design competition that architects registered now in Alberta could respond to? Its location in the riverfront district and proximity to City Hall and the courthouse would seem to say it is. This competition could produce an exciting architectural design for what may well become a new landmark building in the downtown business district. The conceptual drawings that were included in our proposal show what the band and choir would need for their practice sessions and storage space. The drawings also show office space on the upper floors of the building that could be leased out until such time these floors would be needed for civic offices. We see the benefits of the dual-purpose civic building. Being more civic office employees working downtown will lead to increased business activity in the downtown area. Groups using the existing community hall on Perrin Street and the new community hall in Patch, together with the performing arts participants now coming downtown for practice sessions, will lead to an increase in business activity during evenings and on weekends. Parking will be available for up to 76 cars and can be expanded into a multi-story parcade when needed in the future, as recommended in DARP. Does the city need additional office space today in the downtown area? Get back to this slide, sorry. Does the city need additional office space today in the downtown area? Lot 22 can be reserved for development by the city until a capital budget can include funding for this new dual-purpose civic building. Lot 22 can easily be developed into an urban forest picnic park and held ready for construction at Patch when planning and design is completed. And we proposed a drawing that shows what the park would look like with some picnic tables. People use it that way in the summer now and it would certainly add to it. A dual-purpose civic office building can be the catalyst needed to strengthen downtown redevelopment. Patch on Lot 22 plus the civic offices yields positive results. And as the city grows, having this civic building in the centre of the city will contribute to the success of many goals described in Flourish. We think that planning for this project now will generate the spark needed to revitalize the downtown business district that you were searching for in your committee meeting a few weeks ago. Oh, there's one more slide here. I'll learn how to do this.
There you go.
Flourish, the city's municipal development plan bylaw, includes a policy to maintain DARP to guide the future development of the downtown as the city's civic and cultural heart. We believe a new dual-purpose civic building meets this objective in the MDP and would be welcomed into our downtown neighbourhood as a valued asset. We leave this proposal in the hands of city council and request your thoughtful consideration to pass the following motion: To designate Lot 22 on St. Thomas Street to be held by the city of St. Albert for the purpose of constructing a dual-purpose civic office building and performing arts community hall. We would be pleased to meet with your planning department if you would like them to review the conceptual plans we presented and further explore the value to the city we believe is possible if our proposed motion is approved. Thank you for giving us time on your agenda today to present our proposal for your consideration.
So process-wise, I just, I'll explain. So on our agenda is presentations, and then the next agenda item is called Business arising from that presentation. So at this point in our meeting, it's a chance for members of council to ask you questions. And then, then there are two more speakers on St. Thomas Street, and then we'll, after they're done and any questions of them have been answered, we will go to our staff, because I think council might have some questions for our planning department as well. So I'll open up to the floor, Lauren, councillor Hughes, and Jolly and Bremesk. I need to bring up the participants, but there you go. Councillor Jolly's already got her hand up. Go ahead, Natalie.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I think all of those, and have ideas that you have are are reflected in what we want to see for the downtown core, so that's great. So my question is, what are the concerns with near-market housing? Because that wasn't mentioned in your plan, so I'm a bit confused.
Near-market, near-market housing is a need in St. Albert, but it belongs in the residential district in St. Albert, in our opinion.
Okay, sorry, like, so you do not consider where you live a residential district?
I'm in Millennium Heights. That's the residential district. It certainly suits that housing. We have areas west of us that can be developed for that.
Okay, so this proposal is just because you're opposed to near-market housing at this area?
Pardon me?
So is this proposal because you're opposed to near-market housing?
Oh, I think that the lot has absolute more value than a dollar for the city.
Okay. Sweet, okay. I'm, I'm going to think about it. I might have another question if someone else wants to go.
Sure. I have more, some comments about some of the questions. So I wrote it down. You said that there's 375 condo owners in the downtown, is that correct?
Yes.
So that's the whole downtown, not just?
That's Perrin District and Millennium Heights.
Oh, okay. And then you're speaking on behalf of four buildings?
Yeah, for the total 98 condos.
Okay, and so that's every, that's every condo owner in those four buildings?
We had representatives, representatives from each building that met in our committee.
Okay, awesome. I actually did not know that this community band was using their space at Paul Kane. That was new information for me. So the survey, was it, was it more of an open-ended survey saying what do you think would belong in this spot? Or did you provide options of choices for that area?
While we began looking for what fits in the downtown area and based upon our experience with the arts and the performing arts needs, that's what led us to ask what's going on, because we knew about Paul Kane issue for the band. We knew about St. Albert Singers. And we went and talked with the community hall people, because we thought with an 82-year-old building, is the building reaching end of life? And it is not for them. They say that they would like to continue operating where they are and they have a certain design and style for their building that serves quite well. So they have been spending money to preserve that building. But they see that the patch would be complimentary to their building. And in fact, have offered to even help the city in how it would be managed or run or coordinated between the two. So they saw it as a complimentary addition to their facility, which then brings more people to downtown St. Albert.
Yeah, and that is the goal, really, in many ways. And that allows the restaurants to stay open past five and the businesses to sell their wares. So I totally agree with you there. I just wanted to, do we have Adrian online? Okay. Okay, Adrian, you can correct me later, because I'm going to come to you when we get to Business arising. But, because you did reference DARP a fair amount in the report that you sent us. And so DARP is a conceptual plan that guided the city planning department to come up with the bylaws surrounding that plan. Because you noted that there's been a change of use. And so, you're correct, in DARP, there's this purple thing that looks like a civic center in that space. But the actual bylaws, and Adrian, just give me a nod if I'm on the right direction. The actual bylaws of what can go there, there's a long list of permitted uses. So, it's not, it wasn't meant to be a civic space. It could be many, many different things. And that is the planning document. Just give me a nod, Adrian. Yeah, he's giving me a nod, of how we plan for that space.
But then the later bylaw in 2020, Flourish reinforces DARP to use Riverfront for the items that we have described.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I agree. I just was making sure that it was, because you did reference change of use, and so there really hasn't been any use changed. It's got a long list of permitted, and nothing's, we're not going outside the permitted uses, I guess what I'm saying.
With a Patch building, you're not going outside the use that's planned for Riverfront.
And honestly, I've got to tell you, your concept is fantastic, and I would love to see it happen. One of the problems in the municipality of St. Albert is we don't have a lot of city land for purposes such as an art center or the housing that is proposed. So, that's one of our biggest problems. I'm just going to get a nod from Kerry, our interim city manager, about the office space. So, you did wonder, you didn't say definitely about the need for office space. The city purchased a building in Campbell last year or the year before, I can't remember. A lot of our staff are located there. So, Kerry, just a nod, because I'm going to go, we can wait. But I'm under the understanding we're not looking for a lot of office space right now. And, right, especially because of the pandemic. We've got staff that are 50/50 in sharing space, etc. So, those are just some comments that I had about the concept. And I guess I have the question for you. Did you at all, in your planning, have an estimated cost of this facility?
No.
Yeah, and as you can tell by myself, that's going to be the hard one, right?
Well, I think that it should be talked about from the perspective of who in the community, from a development point of view, might be interested in this particular concept for this particular site.
Okay.
Because there is office space to rent, and there is need for office space in downtown centers, we know that.
Okay.
And also then Flourish, that took us to the 100,000 population of St. Albert, I still don't know whether you have enough office spaces for that.
For that next, the growth of the staff. You're right, we probably need to talk about that. Some of the groups, and you're correct, you only mentioned three. There's probably more groups that would be interested. But of the three you talked to, was there any conversation, I guess, about contributions financially to build this?
No, we didn't get that part.
All right, so, and I get that you're really just asking us to thoughtfully consider, I think is the words to use, and we absolutely will. I'm going to see if there's any more questions from members of council. No, we'll get over here. Natalie, did you have your questions answered?
I'm just confused, because this is very different from the conversation with, when I had with the board member, whose primary concern was that low-income people would ruin downtown. So, I'm just trying to get a sense of, is that no longer a concern about low-income people, or?
Well, I'm not sure that that, I'm not sure who that board member was, is part of this committee. Like, this is essentially a separate proposal, I guess, is how I would think of it.
We wanted to find what is right for the lot, and I hope that that's what we've given you to think about.
And I appreciate all the work that you've done and the studying and the surveys and the pictures. And I'm not sure exactly how to respond to this. I think I'll talk to our city manager when we get to that part of the agenda, because I do believe you deserve a response for this, for sure.
I just.
Do you have a question?
I just.
Look at all the little tabs you have in there.
Yeah, I just wanted you to know that I did read it, and I give a tip. And I will be asking some questions in relation to your proposals. So, I just want to say thank you very much for the work that you've done on it, but for.
Thank you.
I do encourage you to stick around for the next 10, 15 minutes while we get to the questions of our staff. So, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Next I have registered is Jopri Fontaine. Let me know when you're ready. Welcome back to chambers. Can we get another water? Last one. Okay, thank you. Are we ready? Is it going to work? There we go. Thank you.
All right, good afternoon, council. My name is Jopri Fontaine. My pronouns are he and him, and I've been a resident of St. Albert for the past 35 years. There's a little bit of a lag here. There we go. I share this image, as it kind of brings back, this brings back a lot of memories for me. As a young man in St. Albert, I grew up playing actually quite a bit of hockey at the Ducky Dome. So, for those of you who are not as familiar, this was located here in our downtown. You can actually see the trail in the background there on what we now view as kind of off Brown Street on St. Thomas. And so, I would recognize that, you know, where and since this time, our downtown has changed quite a bit, including the construction of the buildings where I now own a condo in Churchill House 2. Over the last decades, there has been very strong, and I recognize already the reference to kind of DARP and some of the vision for our downtown. And that vision has been around for a long time, has evolved, has kind of changed a little bit when we looked at that. But it is and continues to be a reason why I purchased in the downtown. Now, I do recognize, so this is not a public hearing. I know there's already permitted uses. We're not talking about those changes to heights of buildings, uses, parking, anything like that. Those are already approved. We did, however, receive notice in our condo common area encouraging us to come and participate in the meeting here today. And so, I felt it important to share the view representing owners living in our downtown who are supportive of kind of the proposed near-market housing and diverse housing options. So, as an owner of a unit in Churchill House 2, I'd like to speak to the character of St. Albert, our community, and the needs of its residents. And I would say that the character of a community is in its people, not in its buildings. Now, currently, every level of government, from all political ideologies, are discussing the need for additional housing. Affordable and near-market housing is a principle of the United Nations Declaration for the Right of Adequate Housing. In St. Albert, our community is not immune to those needs for affordable and near-market housing. These are our families with children in our schools. These are our children, some of who are couch surfing and living in their cars, who grew up in St. Albert and are starting out in challenging economic times. These are our parents who have limited choices in finding appropriate low-maintenance housing within their fixed income budgets to age in the community that they have been part of for decades. So, our community has a duty to provide these choices with availability of funding. And I would note, since a lot of this has come out, including an additional, I think it was $475 million of accelerated funding being available from the federal government to accelerate these types of projects. So, there's great options of funding from both federal and provincial governments. So, the time right now is to act. But affordable and near-market housing is not only about the physical building, but also importantly about the location. The 15-minute city, with its emphasis on walkability and accessibility, has been put forward as a way to better serve groups of people that have historically been left out of planning, such as women, children, people with disabilities, and the elderly. Now, in St. Albert, I had to go a little bit further. I said within 20 minutes of our downtown. And this is in order to add two grocery stores found on our commercial corridor. We can find five elementary schools, four junior high schools, two high schools.
No, that was your 30-second warning.
That was five already?
No, four and a half.
Oh, all right. All right, so it's just this, for me, all of these organizations, so businesses, medical offices, pharmacies, are all beneficiaries of being within walking distance of an affordable and near-market housing. And so, it is vital that as an affordable and near-market housing is best located near essential services and near transportation, like our St. Albert Center Transit Hub, to support these community needs. Ask anyone buying gas for their cars today, the cost of owning a car drastically increases the cost of living. And so, these are the reasons why I bought in the downtown. I bought because of its vision, its future, not its past or its present, and the vibrancy of a St. Albert community that includes everyone.
Sorry about that. I know, five minutes goes by super fast.
Yep.
All right, do we have any questions for Mr. Prefontaine? I'm seeing no questions. So, thank you for coming and expressing one condo owner's view for the downtown. That's perfect. Thank you. And the last presenter we have is Ray Watkins. I almost said Counselor Ray Watkins. Two former counselors presenting, it's interesting. Welcome back to chambers.
Thank you. I always said I wouldn't come back unless something was important, and I think this is important, so I came back. When do you want to start the timer? Let me know.
It's going.
Okay, I'm here today speaking in support of the housing project on 22 St. Thomas. Just to give you a little bit of history, we tried to sell this land at market value. There were zero offers for it. I also want to remind the public of the duty of a city council as stated in Section 153 of the Municipal Government Act. It's to consider the welfare and interests of the municipality as a whole. And I also should remind the residents that the city has a St. Albert policy on affordable housing, of which the first stated purpose is to encourage the development of affordable housing in St. Albert. And this policy has been in place since 2013. The vision states that St. Albert is an inclusive, family-oriented community to promote a high quality of life for all residents regardless of income. Council recognizes that affordable and entry-level housing options in a variety of dwelling forms are needed to support business and industry. The mandate also says that it will encourage and facilitate the development of entry-level affordable housing and special needs housing through the use of municipal planning tools where available. And it also says that the city will explore partnerships with relevant stakeholders, such as non-for-profits, such as the Homeland Housing, who we're looking at. It also says the municipality still use municipal-owned land as a source of housing sites where practical, which is this is, because we tried to sell it and couldn't sell it. And also, it says that they may lease or sell to eligible groups. Do we need affordable housing? Nationally, one in three renters are concerned about their ability to pay next month's rent. 24,000 Alberta households are on a waitlist for affordable housing. One-third of those on the waiting list are seniors, one-third. The St. Albert Food Bank says that 60% to 71% of the families that access their services are spending more than 50% of their income on rent. A Homeland Housing says there are 144 seniors on a waiting list in St. Albert for affordable housing, and that the average wait time is six years. 88% of St. Albert seniors in need of affordable housing have an annual income of less than $29,000. So, is affordable housing needed in St. Albert? Yes, it is, and this is an opportunity to get affordable housing on land that the city owns. I'm on old-age security pension, old-age and Canada pension, and I make around 1,400 bucks a month off that. I can't afford a one-bedroom apartment in St. Albert on that price. So, do we need affordable housing? Yes, we can. And it saddens me when I hear people say that they're against affordable housing in St. Albert. I've been involved in land use planning and development for 40 years, and I can't tell you how many times I've heard the arguments against affordable housing. And it's the same old tired arguments. People say there's going to be crime, there's going to be this, it's going to be decreasing their value in properties, and 99% of those are unfounded, and there's never any information given to support it. I'll tell you who's going to live in these houses. It's going to be your sons, your daughter, your granddaughters, your grandma, your grandpa, seniors, retired people on fixed income, and maybe someone who's fallen on hard times. Those are the people who are going to live in these places, okay? So, we have no need to fear. Does somebody who make less money, are they less of a person, or are they more of a criminal, somebody who makes more money? I submit they are not. So, as a society, we have to look at ways to help the less fortunate. Those who have fallen on hard times, we have to open our hearts and our wallets to projects like this and support them. And as St. Albertans, we have to make decisions that are good for the city as a whole, not just for a small group of residents, okay? There's 66,000 people in St. Albert. We have to look at what's best for the city. Where else would you like to put this than our downtown? It's an appropriate location. It's close to residents, it's close to libraries, it's close to the provincial building, it's close to the post office, the arts, transit, shopping. What more can you ask for? Where would you want to put it? So, I do state my unequivocal support for the proposed project on 22 St. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Any questions for Mr. Watkins?
I'm keeping your seat warm, I think.
Yes, you are. No questions.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. We're going to now, oh, sorry, did somebody? All right, Mr. Hilt, so I think it's time now to ask questions of your staff. If you have, I see Adrian is probably still here. So, council members. Counselor Broadhead's going. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to Mr. Hilt, so a presentation received. What would be the normal course of events for, you know, assessing such a proposal like this?
Thank you, Counselor Broadhead, through members of council. This takes a fairly significant change of direction. So, my recommendation that we would have council, so choose, is it would come back through staff, and we would analyze and bring back options to council in terms of its considerations, costs, etc. And that's probably all we could probably provide you today on that, on that direction.
I think suffice it to say, though, that a building like this would require pretty much 100% taxpayer support in order to purchase this in light of our current granting environment. Would that be a reasonable assumption?
Again, through Counselor Broadhead, through the mayor and council members, you're probably fairly accurate with that. I'm not aware of any civic grants that are available federally or provincially. However, from time to time, there are cultural significant heritage grants available. But if you can get it for this, that's always a coin toss. So, anytime you go into a granting situation, you should be looking at paying for it 100%. And any grants that you receive would be gravy.
And then finally, just to confirm, the city has put up 22 St. Thomas Street on the open market and didn't receive any offers?
Yes, we had that on the open market, I believe, for over 90 days in 2019 through the spring and summer.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Broadhead. Any members of council at home have any questions? The, then, Counselor Killig, oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you two administration, could some of the, is it possible that some of the proposed uses that were presented today for the different groups, community group, could they be accommodated within? could they be accommodated within the future amenities, community amenities site as an alternative?
Um, thank you for the question, councillor Killick, and through council members. Um, that would be probably one of the administration recommendations is that we would put it through to the community amenities, and they'd be part of the uh the needs assessment that is coming forward to be looking at recreation, cultural, um, and needs across the whole community.
That's the only question yet? Okay. Alright, councillor Mackay.
Yeah, just, I mean, I'm assuming you're going to ask administration in relation to the question around the land use.
Yeah, I can get to Adrian.
So I'll leave you that one, but I'm, I guess just following up on councillor Killick's question in relation to maybe some long-term of benefit. Is there, I mean, right now, are we assisting um in relation to both the Community Band and the St. Albert Singers Guild? I know they do provide some performances, or I believe that they've provided performances at the Arden and other city locations. Do we support them in any other ways that you know of right away, or you can get back to me if you need that?
Um, yeah, thank you for the question, councillor Mackay. I'll have Diane Inger answer the question. Thanks.
Good morning to councillor Mackay. Um, we have Andrea Gam online, who may be able to answer more specifically in terms of what we do support, our culture of performing arts people. We do have our performing arts space over in Campbell that is used by all of our performing arts groups, as well as our schools are also a big source of opportunity for our community organizations to use space in our community. But if Andrea is online, I will ask her to respond in more detail to you.
Uh, thank you, good morning councillor Mackay. Um, I can speak specifically in relation to the community band, and they have, we are chatting with them. We are aware of their loss of the use of balcony, and they have come through the city art space. We can look at that as a potential venue. They had one trial practice there, and we're quite pleased, so we're just currently working through their momentum of that space.
Thank you. So I mean, in the short term, there, they, there's maybe at least a short-term alternative. Alright. And then I'll just wait. I mean, my other questions were around, more around, I believe, your line of questioning to Edward.
Well, you can go. You can ask.
I'm just following up and would be probably to Mr. Blake in planning would be just basically around some of the concerns raised by the presenter around, you know, DARP and the land use bylaw that would, I guess, take precedence over DARP and other conceptual plans. Um, can you make any comment in relation to uh in, in, around housing, housing types or around, uh, maybe, I'm just trying to find the exact word, I apologize, new dual-purpose civic buildings? Is there any conflict?
Can you repeat that question again, councillor Mackay?
Repeat the question.
Well, basically, basically what I'm looking for is, so DARP is a concept plan. We know the Flourish is new MDP, which is obviously a statutory plan that takes precedence. But in relation to land use bylaw, so the land use bylaw specifically outlines where we have types of buildings, size of buildings, locations, and so I'm just wondering, would uh housing, affordable housing project be a suitable project in the downtown?
Uh, yeah, so, um, yeah, and I apologize for that. My audio just cut out for a second. So um administration has reviewed the proposed use for mixed-use, mixed-income, multi-story project on 22 St. Thomas. Uh, initial review indicates that it is consistent with the municipal development plan Flourish. Um, it's consistent with the downtown area redevelopment plan, and as we understand it, the proposed uses would be consistent with the land use bylaw. And likely as a permitted use. So from, from all three perspectives, it seems to be a permitted and consistent use. And I think, you know, to speak to the downtown area redevelopment plan, uh, and particularly the municipal development plan, I'm sorry. Uh, there's a lot of policies with a lot of thought about really trying to encourage efficient use of infrastructure, intensifying the downtown, increasing population, making the downtown more exciting, vibrant, et cetera. And that means people, so, uh, yeah, based on our review, the proposed, proposed project for a mixed-income, mixed-use building would be consistent with the MDP, DARP, and land use bylaw.
Thank you. You answered it so much better than I asked it.
Than I did, too. Uh, councillor Brumansky.
I just have a question with regard to the land being advertised for sale. Is 90 days common to give up on selling a piece of land? And I mean, the market would be quite a bit different this year than it was in 2019. And then I'd like to know if there's other options for affordable housing where the city doesn't have to give away land for that specific need. Do we have other land without giving away land? Can Homeland Housing build without us donating land?
Oh, I'll start out here. So thank you for the question, councillor Brumansky, and to members of council. Um, so first, when we're kind of looking at 90 days to, it could even be up to 160 days if you would advertise location, what was kind of unique in this situation was we did not get any bites whatsoever. And it was basically, it was a dead call for, um, for the proposed property. When we're looking at affordable or near-market housing or non-market housing, low-market housing, however you want to define that, usually the municipality would need to kick in something. So either they would kick in land or they would kick in some seed funding. And in this case, um, land was available, and it was determined by council to put that land forward at that time. If we were looking at another property, uh, we may have to either look at the value of that land or seed funding for the project to move forward. Um, we do have the motion on the books directing Homeland Housing to come back to council for a decision and for the CAO to execute an agreement if council so chooses at that time.
And I do believe, just for the first part of the question about the 90 days, I feel like this was the second or third time getting a nod from councillor Broadhead, who have been around for a while, that this, that some lots of land in the downtown of St. Albert have been put up for sale. And again, no one had purchased it. So it was 90 days this time, but it was in the past as well that we offered it up. And then I also want to also comment and remind councillor Brumansky that um, a city's commitment to affordable housing is is going to be, is starting to be required by provincial and federal governments. So the, the restore money that we just got, the $790,000 to operate, help us our loss of revenue for transit, had the requirement that we demonstrated our commitment to, and our, and our skin in the game, I guess you would say, to affordable housing. So we were, we were able to say the 22 St. Thomas Street project was that skin in the game, and we got the $790,000 for transit. So that, it's, it's, it's a very interesting link that the federal government made between affordable housing and transit, but it's becoming a requirement for all municipalities to either put up a three-and-a-half-million-dollar piece of land or give three-and-a-half million dollars in cash, which is something that we don't have right now. So. Um, is that all the questions you had? Okay.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. I was just going to add to that is that, uh, you know, just further to what you were just commenting on is that it is a requirement for the, to get other levels of government funding, either provincially or federally.
Right.
The municipality does put skin.
Matching, yeah.
So this, this case, we wouldn't be putting matching in, but we have to put in something.
Right, okay. Any further questions? Yeah, go ahead.
The only other question I had is if there would be another piece of land that would be suitable for the, for the Homeland Housing in another area of St. Albert.
Yeah, and I, and I believe that when we were looking at the 22 St. Thomas, we had looked at a number of properties. Uh, so we would have to, if council directed administration to relook at this, we would need to bring back that list. Uh, I think there was five or six properties, but they all had the pros and cons. And this, this was the, the one that probably had the least amount of barriers in front of it.
Yeah, we, yeah, I think we, I think you, if you haven't seen it, councillor Brumansky, we get it for you. There's a map somewhere of all the city-owned pieces of land in, in the city of St. Albert. Some of them uh are designated for school sites, and so, and we can't use those. And uh, some of them, you know, need, need more work before they're even serviceable and ready. But if you want that map, we can absolutely get it for you.
Okay, are they a lower of value than the land downtown?
I wouldn't be able to tell, but.
Okay, thanks then.
Sure. Uh, do you have another question? Go ahead. Oh, yeah, there we go. Councillor Killick, go ahead. Yeah.
Thank you. Um, I heard a comment that uh the land was worth being donated at the value of a dollar. And um just want to correct that, we had discussed selling it at a significant fair market value, and that was going to be a significant contribution on behalf of St. Albert to use, so that Homeland Housing could use that as um a way to show our commitment. And I can't recall, did we disclose what that fair market value was uh when it was initially assessed, uh, prior to be put up for sale? I think that was, that was public, I believe. Does anybody know what that
Yeah.
contribution could be?
The dollar value?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, so thank you councillor Killick, through Madam Mayor, members of council. The, we had the assessed value, and I believe if someone on economic development is online, it was between 2.5 and $3 million for the, for the various two parcels. But to basically get the agreement forward with, with um Homeland Housing, it would, it would go to them for a dollar as execution, but that would be our commitment and, and costs.
Thank you for that clarification, because the two numbers have kind of got muddled up, and I, there's a big difference between a dollar and, and two and a half to three million dollars. So I just wanted to thank you for that clarification.
Alright, I see no more hands up for questions of our administration. I'll just let those in the gallery know. As, as our interim city manager, Mr. Hilt, said, there is a council motion to direct this agreement with Homeland. The agreement's coming to council in June, I think. Um, so in order to change that, we would need a council motion to reverse that direction. So members of council, all seven of us have the document. Um, I don't expect a motion today, because I think we needed to read it over and have our opportunity to ask you questions, ask our staff questions. Um, but I commit to myself responding on behalf of council just for receipt and, and of this document. And then, of course, if a member of council wants to make a motion to change the direction of that piece of land, then that is their prerogative, and that would be a public debate, and we would go from there. So that is the process. Alright, I think that's everything on 22 St. Thomas for today. Thank you for joining us. You're welcome to stick around for the riveting auditor report. Alright, so we are moving on to, it's actually agenda item 8.1, which is supposed to be time-specific. Do we have Mr. Stelter here? And I think we have Nicole Hossler as well. Is Nicole with us? There she is. Okay. I'm gonna give, I'm just gonna ask you guys to wait another couple of minutes, because the galleries needs to clear out, and it's quite loud. So we'll just give them time to clear out. Ray's going to explain everything. Yeah. Okay, I think it's quiet enough to keep going. So we are in agenda item 8.2. It is the audited financial statements and the annual report. So we're going to actually do council, just so you know, we're going to do 8.1 as the time-specific, but we'll go straight into 8.2, which is the annual report that Mr. Hilt has got a presentation. Might as well do them together. So, uh, Mr., no, we're going to start with John. John, do you have a presentation for us? And are you, are you doing the presentation or is Nicole?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. It's John Stelter, and we do not have a formal presentation. I have some speaking comments with respect to the package in your agenda for today.
Thank you. Uh, go ahead.
Thank you very, great, thank you very much. My name is John Stelter. I'm a partner representing KPMG, the external auditors for the city of St. Albert. I am joined today by Nicole Hossler, who is the manager who works closely with me and your administrative team to conduct the year-end audit. Uh, I'm not here to speak about or celebrate Ringette, which is more interesting, and poetry, which is absolutely more interesting than audit, but here goes. Um, I'm here today to report the year-end findings of the city of St.
This is important stuff.
Absolutely. I'm here today to report the findings of our audit of the city of St. Albert for the year ended December 31st, 2021. Uh, the results are included and summarized in our audit findings report, which is included in the council package at agenda item 8.1. Uh, our audit findings report builds on the audit plan that was presented now last September to council. I guess September 13th of 2021. We have completed our audit of the consolidated financial statements of the city of St. Albert for the current year and are in a position to release our auditor's report once approved by council, which we would expect to occur this afternoon. We are satisfied that the city's consolidated financial statements are fairly prepared and presented, and that the significant accounting policies, estimates, and disclosures in the financial statements are appropriate. Uh, we have also completed our work with respect to a number of other reporting responsibilities as part of our broader engagement. That includes looking at the city's municipal financial information return, which is the same information and numbers that are in the financial statements that your chief administrative officer will speak to shortly, just in a form consistent across all municipalities in the province. We also conduct special procedures with respect to contributions made to the local authorities' pension plan on behalf of city employees uh, to make sure that, again, all contributions are appropriate and consistent with those appropriate rules and regulations. Uh, we look also at the family and community support services activities of the city. Uh, the contribution agreements you receive in the province of Alberta have specific reporting requirements as it relates to just those funding flows. And we also look at the city's annual report for consistency with the overall external financial results. And again, the annual report is also being presented to council this afternoon. Uh, we've, are satisfied and have completed all activities with respect to all of those reporting responsibilities, and we have no specific matters to report. Short answer is that we're going to be prepared to issue a clear, clean, and unqualified opinion on the results of the city's financial results for the current year. In addition to the activities above, we separately are engaged and report to the St. Albert Public Library. So we have presented those results, and they have been approved already by the library board. And the activities and results of the library are incorporated and included within the consolidated results that you see today. As part of our audit plan, we identified a number of areas of focus for our audit. And we conducted our audit following along each of those major areas of focus. Just to refresh council in terms of what they are, first area is looking at areas of inflows or revenues that might be subject to external restrictions. In the city's context, that would be, for the most part, grants and contributions you would receive from other levels of government, mostly from the province, and that, again, mostly related to capital, capital infrastructure. Um, we're satisfied that you've complied with all terms and conditions of all external grant agreements that you have in place, and that all revenues recognized are appropriately supported. We also look at assets which might be contributed to the city. So you, in terms of tangible assets, you both build assets, but you also have developers who build assets on your behalf and then turn them over to the city once complete. And so we make sure that those assets, as they come to your records, that the lists of the assets are complete, and also the values ascribed to them are appropriate. We had no observations with respect to those matters this year. We look at the accuracy. We look at the accuracy value of any investments that the city holds. You have a significant amount of dollars that are invested, but in very conservative investments, mostly in short-term, medium-term fixed income securities, so that any dollars that are held by the city are well protected. We look also on cap from a capital perspective on dollars that you spend on capital assets and infrastructure. We make sure that all such expenditures are in accordance with your capital plans and priorities, and that they're all approved and appropriate, and we are satisfied that that is the case. We look at the obligation or liability side, so dollars that you might owe to others. One specific area of focus over the last few years has been environmental matters, environmental obligations, and making sure that any accruals relating to contamination or other activities within the city are fully captured in your results. There's been no change in the current year, and you just continued along with a good, solid process to to evaluate such matters, and no change this year. We also look at an overall sense about where you're spending your dollars, both from an operations perspective, operating costs, and also which are dollars that you've spent on payroll, which is the biggest single cost that you have within the city, and any other costs in terms of material supplies that you acquire. We're satisfied that all expenditures are, again, appropriately captured in the financial results. Last, and the other source that you have in terms of inflows are property tax revenues as well. We are satisfied that the property taxes reflected are consistent with approved bylaws and the assessments within the city in the current year. So again, we're satisfied that those were the areas focused in our plan, and that we were able to address and conduct our audit and generate results, appropriate evidence to support our overall conclusions. In terms of audit findings, the next number of pages of our documents speak to some more specific findings with respect to the city. And I can confirm that any matters identified during our audit were fully considered and addressed. There's one matter which is flagged actually within our report this year relating to your new relationship with the Edmonton Metropolitan Transit Services Commission and contributions and support that you're providing on the original buildup of that particular activity that you're jointly working with a number of municipalities in the capital region. At the end of the year, there are are there are amounts where that commission has spent some dollars and is making some initial investments there, and the city has provided a loan guarantee with respect to those activities. It was our view that the city should have recorded an obligation relating to the initial investments that have been made within the commission. This will or expected to resolve over time, but at the end of the year, we flagged an unadjusted amount that is not overall material to the financial results, and it's not been reflected. We're satisfied that does not affect our overall opinion on the results. Any other matters that we did identify during our audit have been fully incorporated within your financial results. So that's with respect to the numbers. We also look at internal control and other matters or opportunities for improvement that we might see within the city. So we did flag one new matter within our findings this year that we believe should be dealt with, and that, again, relates to the Metropolitan Transit Service Services Commission. And our view is that the city really needs to work with your partners now, but the commission has started operations in 2021 to really understand what that long-term relationship will look like, what the city's role as a very significant player within that overall commission will be on a go-forward basis. There's more details within our report itself. We also look to matters that have been raised in prior years, and there's a number that had been raised in prior years. The majority that we identified have been either fully implemented, which is excellent news, or are well underway and in process. We did flag one place where we think that the city needs to do a little bit more legwork with respect to your internal processes, and that really is on those values of contributed assets coming into the city, making sure that you've got good, solid support in place as you record those results in your records. We didn't have any concerns in terms of what you actually put on the books into 2021, but I think really looking at the overall process would make some good sense. A copy of our draft auditor's report is included in the package that we provided, and again, subject to approval today. We're prepared to sign our opinions basically immediately upon receipt of your approval of the results. We're happy to continue to have the opportunity to work with the city of St. Albert as your external auditors, and I would be happy to answer any questions that council may have with respect to our report.
Thank you so much. On that last point, do we sign a three-year contract with with KPMG? Is that how it works?
Through the to you, Madam Mayor, we actually are in the fifth year of a five-year appointment this year. And then there is a an opportunity for renewal.
Renewal. Perfect. All right, thank you. I'm opening it up to council members now. Councilor Killig.
Thank you for the comprehensive report. Just wanted to touch briefly on this right at the end of your comments. It's page 169 of our package, and it's under the controls and other observations. It was the evaluation of contribution from developers. And my question is, one, is the risk that that was identified as the costs aren't being audited, or that they are in they have been tested for reality, but they are too high or too low? What what's the actual risk? And the second part is, is that a risk for contributions in 2021? Or I saw the sidebar notes that it went back to 2017, so I'd just like to get clarification on those two points, and then I have a similar question for our staff.
Sure, through the mayor, I can find a little more clarity with respect to that. These are assets that are being contributed where you the city does not pay for them. So a developer builds on your behalf. There's an expectation that such assets would come to your records for similar amounts as if you would have built them yourself. So it's not going to be perfect, but it should be fair in its view. You've done some work in the last, quite recently, to get some more information coming from developers to get a little bit of an idea about how they much they might have spent on that. Our expectation, though, is when that information comes to you, that you're assessing it, it makes sense. And then you're applying things on a pretty much consistent basis. So I'd consider it a work in progress from your administration's perspective. But it's really just to make sure when you put those dollars on the books that it the numbers make sense and are consistent with the rest of your city assets.
Thank you. So question for through you, Madam Mayor, to administration would be, I assume these are tens of millions of of dollars of built assets that are transferred over. And just want to make sure that we're adequately staffed to do that review and and do that work and get them on onto our books, because oftentimes we hear, you know, huge chunk of work and or it's in progress, but it's it may need more more staff. But I'd just like to make sure we're adequately staffed to meet those obligations.
Are you talking about just getting them on the books or then maintaining those assets, like through public works and et cetera?
No, doing doing the auditing and checking and and getting them on the books. I think that's the process that KPMG noted here. So I just want to make sure that we're we're adequate staff to do that.
So any further question, Councilor Killig? I will have Dan McMorley provide information.
Thank you, Councilor Killig, through the mayor. That's always an interesting question to talk about when you're talking about kind of staff capacity. I mean, I think when we're when we're looking at this particular issue, it's really more around process. And I think, you know, as we as we work to get the processes in place, you know, it takes a little bit extra work in the beginning, and, you know, and we hope that we'll be able to just blend it into our kind of annual annual activities. And as Mr. Stelter had said, you know, we'll be working on this for a couple of years. One of the challenges we have sometimes with some of the items, some of the great recommendations that come from the auditors is that because we we kind of just have an annual cycle and a budget cycle, sometimes it takes several cycles for things to go through before we can actually invoke change in the financial statement. So we so we are working on it. We've made some steps. They've given us some further direction to how to think we can actually improve it even further. So we'll just we'll continue to work on that. But once the process is in place, we feel it should work fairly well.
Thank you.
Awesome. Good question. And Councilor Hughes has a question.
Thank you. So is there any question? Well, let's just ask. Okay, so when I look at the background or hi, John, I'm looking down at my screen now. The what I'd like is just that sometimes the public gets confused about that one statement that says, overall, the city annual surplus remains financially strong at 74.5 million. And they see that, and they think we have 75.5 million of extra money. So can we just go over that one item for the layman to understand what that means? Because when I'm reading it, it means to me, and you can tell me if I'm off, is that it's saying 4.5 million includes the operating surplus, but it also includes all the other assets that we've acquired that really would only be applicable if we did something like Springfield in the in the Simpsons where we sold off the entire town and then took the money and made a new one. Is that correct?
Through the mayor, yes, that that's correct. You have two surplus numbers on your financial results. One of them is at the operations level. And that this last year is actually a slight loss of about $3.6 million. You then get to that 75 million positive at the end. But what that actually relates to is all of the grants you receive from other levels of government show up as inflows. You use those to buy assets. And it's also the developer contributions that we're speaking of when developers contribute assets to you. So that entire $75 million has increased the overall assets of the city. But you're right, you can't turn that into cash unless you sell a road or sell a building or take an activity of that nature. So absolutely, you're correct.
When it says that the capital revenues decreased to 78.81 million, can we just just let's just pretend I'm three again? So because decrease two, it's still a very high number. So can we just kind of wrecked it, put together that how how do we decrease it to that number? Were we expecting a much larger number? Or how does that? How do we go down to 78.1 million, I guess?
Again, through through the mayor, I can answer that. I'm sure administration could as well. That amount is entirely related to how many assets you actually brought into the city this year, either purchased or contributed. So this is the amount of inflows that came to the city to support that. If you build more infrastructure, then the revenue related revenues are likely higher. If developers contribute more dollar more infrastructure than last year, it's higher. I think the comment in your report is just based in comparison to 2020.
Okay. So the one thing that was I'm trying to figure out there was it says capital revenues decreased. So was it the capital revenues were higher in 2020? Hi, Brenda, in 2020, and that's why we're saying
Yes.
Decreased?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so I just want to make sure the public understands that it's not we actually say 4 million in the bank, but we have saved 4 million of assets, some of which is money, much of it is not. Right? Okay, perfect. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Councilor Hughes. Any more questions from any member of council? Seeing none, can I get a member of council to make the? Go ahead, Councilor Mackay. Thank you.
That the report titled 2021 City of St. Albert Audit Findings Report provided as an attachment to the April 19, 2022 Agenda Report titled Auditor's Year-End Communication be received as information. And that administration provide a status update on the audit recommendations is outlined in the report entitled 2021 City of St. Albert Audit Findings Report at the Community Growth and Infrastructure Standing Committee in October 2022.
Excellent. All right, I'll accept that motion. Any comments?
No, just general comments. I was disappointed it wasn't in poem. Would have been nice, but very challenging. No, this is just obviously a requirement under the MGA that we prepare a financial statement from the previous year and attach the audited statement. So thank you very much, and it does look like the city is in a pretty strong financial position, considering everything that we've just had to go through.
I would agree. Any more comments? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Motion or voting close, and that motion passes unanimously. So John and Nicole, let's just hope that the next time we see you, it's not on the screen, that you can come to chambers and give your findings and report in person and in public. So thank you for attending today.
Thank you.
Yes, and Councilor Mackay has requested that if it's in April during National Poetry Month, that your entire presentation rhyme.
I will make sure next year that it does.
It's part of the contract, he says. Okay, and now, Mr. Hilt, do you want to just go right into the annual report?
I was able to figure that out. So thank you, Your Worship, and members of council. Prior to presentation, I'd just like to really, again, express my gratitude and thanks to the staff for all the great work that they've done. You know, within the last couple of years, and especially last year, putting the information together, completing the projects in some very challenging and trying times. A lot of your questions that you did have will also be addressed in this presentation, and and probably about the next 15 minutes should be moving in forward. So a as Councilor Mackay had indicated, the corporate annual report is submission to the GFOA, which is required by the municipal government act. This document provides an overview of the city, various corporate and financial accomplishments throughout the year. There were some meaningful highlights in 2021 of note, the approval of the new MDP flourish. The MDP will serve as a guiding document in planning for the city to reach 100,000 residents in over in the decades to come. The annexation of Sturgeon Lands was approved in late December and came to effect in January 1. You know, one of the things that we've had to deal with over the last couple of years was COVID-19, and it continues to deeply impact the city's core services. And where we'd like to be and where we're going. And again, this is an area where I think the city really excelled at in terms of putting the right foot forward and being very cautious and and forward and forward thinking with its finances moving forward. Progress was delayed in some of the council initiatives, and the city continues to exercise physical responsibility to minimize the financial impacts of the pandemic. Addition of a seventh council where priority was added, Community Recovery Post-COVID-19 Recovery Task Force conducted stakeholder engagement, presented their final report to council in August of last year, and that report included 16 recommendations. In addition to the work of the task force, the Business Resiliency Program was launched to support business during the pandemic. The program assists businesses growing their online presence. So the presentation today will highlight core services delivery strategic priorities, highlights, and audited and solidated financial statements. Despite COVID restrictions that were still in place in 2021, administration was able to continue to provide essential services. I will provide a few highlights that may be of interest to council. Our permitting, we saw an increase, actually a five-year high of permits in 2021. This is in spite of higher building costs that came out like this is this is probably due to the number of home renovations that happened, businesses doing new development projects. It was really great to see we had just over 5,800 permits issued. One of the other areas that we we saw growth in was also assessment growth, 1.94, a little bit lower than we had from 2016, 17, 18, 19, but was a little bit higher than 2020. And this is as a result of some of the new homes that were added in the community. Where we're looking at social supports, this is a very important area for the city. And one of the things that St. Albert is known for is a caring community. The city offered counseling service outreach services primarily focused on school-age children and their families. These opportunities are are also provided for youth to build interpersonal and leadership skills. COVID-19 had a significant impact on residents such as socialized isolation, disruption, access to mental health. on residents such as socialized isolation, disruption, access to mental health supports, exhaustion, burnout and anxiety. These effects were more acutely felt by women, seniors, residents living alone or suffering from homelessness, those dealing with mental health illnesses and/or addictions and marginalized groups. As such, the city increased the availability of counseling or counselors to meet the community need. As the city increased the availability of counselors, the number of clients using these supports increased. The city has started tracking contacts with clients in order to ensure alignment with the family and community support services, short-term prevention-based counseling mandate. And as you see on the scale, um, twenty twenty one was fairly significant in these uh, in these um, needs. On the other end of the spectrum, we probably saw a little bit of a decrease uh, in our diversion opportunities uh, from the, from waste for the landfill. Um, this, this includes organic waste diversion, recycling program, and a centralized site where residents can bring yard waste, recyclables and hazardous materials. In twenty twenty one, there was a decrease in landfill and landfill diversion rates due to higher garbage generation. This was probably caused by residents staying home due to COVID, less leaf and yard organic waste due to a dry summer, and more organics unsuccessfully being diverted from the landfill due to being contaminated. Our water consumption was also up due to it being a very July, a very hot July and June. Moving into council strategic priorities, these priorities are outlined in council strategic plan. Each is a comp- is a compli- is accompanied by the key projects that were undertaken to realize the intent of each priority. We started twenty twenty one with thirty seven projects. Five of these were complete at the end of twenty twenty one. Twenty five projects are on track, three are off track, three are at risk, and one project was not started. This was the net zero pilot project. In total, twenty projects were completed since council strategic plan was approved in twenty eighteen. So we're averaging about five projects a year. So under um, council strategy, uh, councils, that's your plan, the following are the priorities. So under priority one, uh, we have growth policy framework. We have Flourish, the MDP, and the Sturgeon County and uh, annexation. The Edmonton Annexation is on the list and we will be uh, having a public report on that in a couple of weeks. Under priority two, economic development, highlights the Lakeview Business District and Badger Lands Area Structure Plans. Business Resiliency Program through grant offerings, this program supports businesses with developing or improving their marketing presence amid the COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, business incentive strategies and collaborative economic development initiative. And on the uh, positive note on the collaborative economic development, the project has received a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from the GOA um, as uh, to provide some pilot and some scoping work on the project. Priority three, building a transportation network. Uh, we saw the completion of phase one of Ray Given Drive with minor outstanding landscaping efficiency work to be completed. We saw some implementation of the Transportation Safety Plan speed changes and the adapted signaling technology. The technology continues to be applied to St. Albert Trail and those segments are planned to be operational in early twenty twenty two. Priority four, infrastructure investment. Under community amenity site, those of the Shoreau lands and future community amenity site servicing has been, has begun. And the community needs assessment on those lands of the community amenity site are ongoing. Uh, land for fire hall number four, land was secured and subdivisions of the land was approved. And long, uh, long-term revenue generation, um, we completed the solar farm feasibility study. And we are also bringing forward in July, uh, various uh, options for solar plans that will meet the uh, needs of the community. Thirty five housing, uh, housing and social well-being. Municipal development plan, again, the MDP identified opportunities to allow for mixed-use opportunities within key mature neighborhoods. And youth transitional housing, planning began for youth transitional housing. This came out of the uh recommendations from the mayor's task force on homelessness. Priority six, environmental stewardship. Waste reduction, education programs and single-use item reduction strategy. While the pandemic did delay some of the public engagement that was ongoing, the curbside waste reduction education program allowed work to be advanced on single-use item reduction strategy with audits being conducted to determine if single-use items are being discarded. And the green environmental strategy. Planning for the green environment strategy commenced. The strategy is being developed using a new approach for long-range strategies to align with the MDP. It is expect, it is expected to be completed in twenty twenty two. And finally, we have the um, priority seven, community recovery post COVID nineteen. Uh, the work of the recovery task force concluded with the completion of the final report, which was presented to council in August of twenty twenty one. And as I highlighted before, there were sixteen recommendations coming out of that report. And the task force focused on stakeholder engagement regard, uh, regarding recovery from COVID and recommendations. So now I'll move into uh, audited consolidated financial statements. And this is where the, where the presentation is going to get riveting. So we have um, the city's financial position in twenty twenty one remains strong with net financial assets of approximately ninety million dollars. These net assets consist of the city's financial assets of two hundred and forty seven million, less its liabilities of a hundred and fifty eight million. The city also has non-financial assets, which include tangible capital assets, prepaid, and inventories of material and supplies totaling just over one point two billion. This has resulted in accumulated surplus or municipal equity of one point three billion. In twenty twenty one, the city's financial assets increased by twenty, by twenty-two million in twenty twenty. This increase can be attributed to the following areas. A net increase in cash and cash equivalents and investments of fourteen million due to funds received for debt financing and then invested into long-term portfolios as well as short-term maturities. The increase in accounts receivable of approximately eight point five million, mainly due to the COVID nineteen resiliency grant, which the city has submitted for reimbursement in March of twenty twenty two. So we look at the details of our cash and investments. We have forty-five million in the zero to ninety day, which consists mainly of our cash or cash equivalents. Cash equivalents are made up of high-interest saving accounts and investment accounts. We have thirty-five million in short-term investments from ninety-one days to three years, and a hundred and forty-five million in our long-term bond portfolios, which range from three to ten years. The city staggers the investment materials to ensure cash availability for both short and long-term cash needs. Our short-term investments average rates range from point eight five percent to one point two six percent, while long-term investments average rates range from one point four to three point two two percent. In twenty twenty one, a hundred and fifty-eight million in liabilities, a thirty-six million increase from twenty twenty due to its long-term debt was issued on four significant projects in twenty twenty one of approximately thirty-three million, which was then offset by debt repayment of six million dollars. And I'll have more on the next slide that, that will talk about which those four projects are. Off-site levies increased of seven point nine million due to the developer levies from Jensen Lake, Riverside and Aaron Ridge. Deferred revenue decreased by five point seven million due to capital funding spent in various projects. That's fire hall number one, nine point six million, and arterial and local roads of approximately four point two million. Our long-term debt totaled seventy-three point four million at the end of twenty twenty one. In the past year, we took out new debt of thirty-three million for the following projects. New debt for Lakeview Business District and Range Road two sixty of seventeen million. Additional debt for North Sea Albert Trail of seven point five million. Additional debt for Ray Given Drive of six million, and new debt for Fire Hall Number Four Lands, two point six million. Our current debt limit for twenty twenty one is two hundred and eighty-seven million. So that means that we've used seventy-five million or twenty-six percent of the provincial debt limit. The debt limit refers to the maximum amount a municipal, municipality can borrow, that's one point five times revenue. A debt servicing limit of forty-eight million, and we have only used seven point six million or sixteen percent of the provincial limit, of the provincial limit, which is the maximum annual debt payment, including principal and interest of twenty twenty one. That's zero point two five times revenue. Non-financial assets increased by eighty-eight point three million from twenty twenty. This increase is largely attributed to the increase in tangible capital assets. The majority of the TCA balance is made up of buildings, lands, roads, machinery and equipment. The main categories that make up the increase are as follows. Engineered structures increased from twenty nineteen by seventy-eight point four million dollars. This was the developer contributed assets of twenty-five million for Jensen Lake and Riverside Developments, seventeen million for the Lakeview Business District, and six million for North St. Albert Trail. Land improvements increased of fifteen point three million due to the development of Kingsmead Park, two million, Pollard Track, three million, and Woodlands Park redevelopment, one point five million. City's accumulated surplus or municipal, municipal equity increased by seventy-four point five million from twenty twenty to twenty twenty one. The majority of accumulated surplus is made up of just over one billion in equity and tangible capital assets. This is your tangible capital assets, less your appreciation, less your debt. Hundred and sixty-two million in reserves. These reserves include both operating and capital reserves. So accumulated surplus is basically what remains, the cash, non-cash, after all the assets have been used to pay off liabilities. It is an accumulation of the city's past operating surplus deficits and gains and losses. The reserves also includes this um, the City of St. Albert's operating and capital and control entities, including the St. Albert Public Library and the Arts and Heritage Foundation. The statement of operating and accumulated surplus shows the city's revenue and expenses on a consolidated basis. The top portion of the statement focuses on the consolidated operating revenues and expenditures of the city, which results in the annual deficit before capital revenue of three point seven million dollars. Adding in the city's capital revenue with, which was seventy-eight point one million includes contributed tangible capital assets, developer contributions and levies, and capital government transfers. Contributed tangible capital assets are assets donated to the city from developers such as land, roads and utilities. Some of the more significant capital revenue received was the basic municipal grant of four million, the municipal stimulus program of eight million, ICIP COVID nineteen resiliency grant of seven point five million, and MSI of twenty-one million. This results in an annual surplus of seventy-four point five million. The annual surplus is different than the operating surplus as it includes non-cash items such as amortization and contributed assets. In conclusion, the city ended twenty twenty one in a strong financial position due to being, due to being physically responsible proactive to revenue expenditures and address revenue, reduced revenues. Um, more detailed variants and explanations on the functional departments can be found in the fourth quarter report that was presented to council on February fourteen. And I'll be happy to direct any questions to finance.
Come on. Okay, council, any questions? I'm seeing no questions. Good report, I guess. Duro, go ahead, Council Kilik.
Uh, thank you for that detailed report. Something that wasn't touched on, uh, it's on page two eighty-five of the documentation. Uh, it talks about our, our pension plans. Uh, and the question really is, are they fully funded? Uh, that we don't have, there's been a lot of discussion lately in the press about pension funds that are not fully funded or, or significantly underwater. And uh, you know, they, they face big penalties coming up or big uh, shortfalls coming up. I just wondered where St. Albert uh, sat with its various pension plans.
Uh, thank you for the question, uh, Council Kilik, uh, through, through your worship and members of council. You know, I, I would say that overall, our municipal pension plan is very secure. Uh, but I will turn it over to um, Brenda, if she has any additional information that she would like to add.
I was gonna say the same thing, Carrie. Um, yeah, as far as I, I've heard, um, our pension plan is, is fully funded. Um, I haven't heard anything other unless, you know, Ryan, our director of HR is aware of anything, but nothing came out of the audit. So to me, that gives me reassurance that uh, we are not in jeopardy.
Yeah, my, my reference was that other companies' pension plans were uh, not, not referencing that I'd heard anything about St. Albert. So I'd make that clear. It was just other companies in the media had, had their pension plans were underfunded. So thank you for that answer and uh, clear answer here that we're in.
I think, I saw Ryan, Ryan, did you have something to add to that?
Uh, just briefly, that um, the contribution rates are actually starting to go down. They typically don't reduce contribution rates to LAPP as an example, unless funding targets have been met or exceeded. Um, so I, I can get the exact values of, if that's of interest, but I just wanted to note that for twenty twenty-two, the contribution rates actually decreased to the planned funds.
Good indicator. Thank you.
Yep.
Council Broadhead, question?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, just a comment, uh, and perhaps a question in there. Uh, one of, one of the big increases annually is contributed assets by um, developers. Along with the contributed assets comes a operational encumbrance, if you will. If, if a resident were to ask, how are we doing in sort of our lifecycle management uh, of, of these contributed assets, would we say we are in good stead or, or is this putting pressure on our financial picture?
Thanks for the question, Council Broadhead. So, so this is really goes back to the analysis that we've done on all of our assets in terms of our, of our life cycles and the the one point five percent that council um, has agreed to implement actually incorporates um, also the contributed assets that are coming to the city every year, because you're right. While we call them assets, they really, they really become a future liability um, for the city. So that the one point five percent that we're putting in also includes that because that was an area that we were very much missing out on. Um, you know what I mean? We were, we were looking a lot at our city assets, but the contributed assets make up millions and millions of dollars every year of assets that we're getting from the developers. Um, so the, so the plan that we have going forward helps incorporate that as well.
Yeah, thank you very much. I just wanted to draw the link between the two. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Broadhead, originally you had pushed, request to motion when I get to the time. Do you want to make the motion? Okay. Okay, well, Council Mackay's got a question first.
Yeah, and it'll, I, it's a simple one. I just need to refresh my memory in relation to, I mean, this is, I mean, you know, we joke a little bit about some, you know, the dryness of the presentation or like, but I mean, it is, it is uh, great news and very good news considering um, some of the challenges we're going to be faced as we start to move out and the balances and some of the decisions that we're gonna have. How do we communicate this out to the public? Do we, do we put it in the Gazette? Do we put it on our website? I just can't, can you refresh my memory how we do that?
Hey, great question, uh, Council Mackay and through your worship and members of council. Yes, we do put out this information. We probably could even do a better job. Um, actually, um, this is good news. This is good news. And you know, with what specially happened over the past couple of years, we've taken a very proactive conservative approach and came out of the pandemic very positively. You know, basically the impacts based on our revenues and losses and stuff is like three point seven million dollars, which is pretty incredible considering what we could have been faced with. So I think it is on our website and it would show up in the Gazette and it in various other ways. But I think we should be, we should be celebrating this a bit more.
Yeah, thank you. I couldn't agree more.
We used to print at least one copy and keep it at the library. Do we still do that?
I believe we do because I think we have to do that to have one printed at the library.
All right. Council Broadhead, do I make the motion?
I would indeed, Madam Mayor. I moved that the city's two thousand and twenty-one annual report, including the audited consolidated financial statements for the fiscal year ended December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one be approved.
Any comments?
Madam Mayor, I've been here a number of years now and it just, it's it's a tribute, quite honestly, to administration and quite honestly to the councils of the years that this city is in as good a financial shape as it is and want to congratulate administration for running a tight ship. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Voting is closed and that passes unanimously. Okay, now we can actually go and start our agenda. It's like four oh two. So going back to the very beginning, we still need to do consent agenda. So can I have a motion? Pardon? Yes, I'm going to get to that. So I want to pull myself. I've asked Mr. Boflar if we could pull nine point two, which is advertising bylaw because the motion did not actually set a public hearing date. So I kind of pushed him a bit and said, can we do that today? And he has let me know that August fifteenth would be appropriate. So when we get to that, there's a new motion that would be ready. So if we can do everything else on consent other than nine point two, that would be great, unless anyone else has anything else to pull. All right, who wants to make the motion? Council Jolly, how about you?
Sure, Tamara, can you put that in?
Or actually, my Council Kilik's got his, if you want him to do it.
Sure, yeah, that's fine.
Ready to go. All right. I just chose you because I know how fast you can speak when it's a long motion. Council Kilik, you have the task?
It's it's ready if you are.
Yeah, I'm I'm ready.
Okay, go ahead.
The recommendations in the following agenda reports be approved. Six dot one, regular council meeting minutes of April fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, committee of the whole minute meeting minutes of April sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, and the committee of the whole meeting minutes of April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Seven dot one, community living standards committee, CLSC draft unadopted minutes and agenda items from April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Seven dot two, CSLC recommendation arising from environmental advisory committee. Seven dot three, CSLC recommendation, senior advisory committee annual report. Seven dot four, CLSC recommendation arising from CSAC and EAC recommendations for community recognition. Seven dot five, CSLC recommendation, notice of intention to designate the Lauren and Marguerite Aitken's residence at Eight Burnham Ave as a municipal historic site. Seven dot six, CLSC recommendation, St. Albert poet laureate appointment. Seven dot nine, community growth and infrastructure standing committee, CGISC draft unadopted minutes and agenda items from April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two.
Excuse me, mayor, there's also two other ones that's not coming up on the screen, seven point one zero and nine point one.
It's on page six of your agenda package.
Which ones are they?
Yeah, seven point one zero.
And nine point one.
And nine point one.
Seven point one zero, CGISC recommendation, Ray Given Drive and North Sea Albert Trail funding requests. And nine dot one, scheduled public hearing date for bylaw forty-seven slash two thousand and twenty-one amendment to Jensen Lake's ASP and forty-eight slash two thousand and twenty-one Jensen Lake's twelfth redistricting.
Perfect. All right, I will call for the vote. Voting is closed and passes unanimously. Thank you to the committees. That was obviously the community living standing committee was super busy. So it was nice to get some of that done outside of council and provided some councillors the opportunity to attend or not attend if they so wish. So thank you for that. I will have my work cut out when we get to those agenda items now. So so six on our agenda was minutes from previous meetings. I won't read them in, but seven point one was the draft minutes from last Monday's community living standing committee and their agenda package. Seven point two, I will read, which is the C, Community Living Standing Committee recommendation that read as follows, that the mayor provide a letter of support for the Alberta Community Partnership Grant submitted for the Regional Lake Action Plan. So that letter will be signed off pretty soon. Seven point three was that the seniors advisory committee two thousand and twenty-one year in report be received for information. And number two, that the seniors advisory committee proposed two thousand and twenty-two priorities are as follows. Seniors online application review, gather seniors feedback on the experiences in accessibility to city facilities, monitor the impact of COVID-nineteen on seniors, provide feedback on the companionship and mentoring program and provide feedback from community experiences. Thanks to that group. Okay, so this is one that was actually kind of held in confidence until today. So seven point four was recommendations from community living committee, but arising actually from the CSAC and the EAC. So that the following nominees receive the two thousand and twenty-two City of St. Albert Community Recognition Awards. So in the category of citizenship, we have the St. Albert Nordic Ski Club groomers. It's a family oriented Nordic ski club that offers a variety of youth programs, adult lessons and ski tour adventures. Many dedicated club volunteers maintain St. Albert's best Nordic ski trails at Kingswood Park, Riverlot fifty-six and to the Surgeon County. The grooming team is being nominated for their tireless efforts to maintain the ski trails, winter walking trails, specifically during the pandemic when other activities were limited. So congratulations to them. And in the category of environmental stewardship, the award will go to Bob Lane. Bob Lane was known for being one of the founding members of the Big Lake Environmental Support Society, all formerly known as BLESS. He was one of the first people to support the idea for BLESS in nineteen ninety-one. Bob continued to dedicate his time and efforts to conserve the Big Lake wetlands through this, through his research, knowledge of birds in the area and raising awareness of a nonprofit organization for nearly thirty years. He was an integral part of getting Big Lake designated as important bird area and listed under the province's special places program. This award is being provided posthumously, I can't see that word, after his passing. So congratulations to those two new community partners, sorry, community recognition. Seven point five, the notice or the motion read that that pursuant to section twenty-six, six of the Alberta Historical Resources Act, council affirmed that the property at Eight Burnham Avenue, known as the Lauren and Marguerite Aitken's residence, is a historic resource, the preservation of which council considers to be in the public interest. And number two, that the chief administrative officer be directed to, A, serve upon the registered owner of the property at Eight Burnham Ave, notice of council's intention to consider a bylaw to designate the property as a municipal historic resource. And B, take all necessary steps in compliance with the Historical Resource Act, including preparation of a bylaw per council's consideration, leading to designating the property at Eight Burnham Avenue as a municipal historic resource. And number three, that six thousand dollars be transferred from the Heritage Reserve Fund to the Culture Administration account to fund the administrative process of designating Eight Burnham Ave as a municipal historic resource. Then, as no big surprise, because we've already had a public announcement, seven point six was the appointment of our St. Albert poet laureate. So the motion that was on consent was that Lauren Seal be named St. Albert poet laureate for a two-year term commencing April two thousand and twenty-two and ending in April two thousand and twenty-four. Congratulations again, Lauren. We look forward to that. Seven point seven was not on consent, so I can take a breather. And I can turn it over to Council Mackay. This is a recommendation that your, that came from our administration to your committee that was not supported by committee. So I'll have you speak to that. Any comments on the conversation and then any further action?
Yeah, the defeated recommendation was that basically, I'm on, wait, I'm on the parks bylaw.
Yeah.
So basically, where administration presented the committee with a new and modernized parks bylaw based on direction from council, but also the fact that this is one of our oldest bylaws on our books that has only seen the occasional tweaking or addressing and certainly presents challenges to not only our administration, but also to our residents. So administration came back to committee with a new and modernized bylaw. And after much discussion around some of the components, it it lost on a tie vote. I am prepared, based on conversations, though, I believe that administration was left kind of high and dry without direction as to what to, how to proceed next. So I am prepared to actually bring forward first reading of a parks bylaw right now or when the time's appropriate.
Sure, I mean, you have, you as chair or any member of committee or council have that right to take something that was in the agenda package and revisit it. That is the, to me, one of the benefits of the committee structure is because the final decision really does rest with council, not committee. So I will actually open it up to questions before I take any motions. Council Vermansky, go ahead.
Through the mayor, to Council Mackay. I listened to a lot of repetition in this bylaw, so I probably listened to the whole presentation about six times. And I found that through the community, a lot of the questions that were answered, they were, they were placed in the, in the side of the bylaw, but they weren't addressed. So we consulted the people and we didn't do anything about what, we didn't change anything in the bylaw. So it was like we did a consultation without taking any of it back to the city or in another direction. I have a lot of questions about the bylaw. We don't have implemented costs coming up with staff, webpage, administration process, signage, enforcement. It's also directed for a hundred thousand population for the parks area, which we haven't even developed in the city yet. So that makes me think it's, you know, somewhat premature. But most, the thing that's most somewhat disturbing to me is that it says in the wording that people will have to know the bylaw or go to the website to to understand the bylaw. And when it was presented to us, many questions were asked by council that weren't answered. It was like a speculation on lots of parts of the bylaw. We do have, we do have laws to protect the trees. We have laws to protect, say, encroachment, littering, but.
A question for administration?
Well, the the question is, I guess my question is, why were the things that were suggested by the public not addressed? So nothing's, nothing's changed in the bylaw.
Okay, good. And I just want to remind committee members that at the committee, I said, if you have any questions on the bylaw, submit them by email. So we didn't get any, did we get any emails, questions? Okay. So there is a specific question, I guess, Mandy, you want to answer it about public input and sometimes why we take it and sometimes why we don't.
Yeah, through the chair and thank you very much, Council Vermansky, for your comments. We did quite a bit of public engagement or outreach. Again, I didn't hear from a lot of people, not that the input that we received wasn't valuable. And not being clear on which portions of the bylaw that Council Vermansky is suggesting weren't responded to publicly. I can say that overall, the draft that was presented to the public was supported. All of the questions that we asked, both through our focus groups and our survey, were all supported by a majority. We didn't take anything back as administration's recommendation that was not supported through through survey or through discussions. If Council Marianowski has specific areas she'd like responses to, that would be very helpful.
Other specific areas would be like excess of enforcement, number of people in gatherings wasn't mentioned, distance of liquor from the picnic tables, people having to book for a small, you know, a small event. The cost, that was never mentioned either. And the big one was the CAO direction, like, you know, we don't even have a CEO right now. And and to just dedicate all the rules in this.
So Council Vermansky, just so you know, we do have a CAO. By the MGA, we have made a council motion to appoint Mr. Hiltz as our CAO. So that, just to correct that for public, we have a CAO because we are required to by the MGA.
Okay, well, that wasn't, that wasn't addressed to the public. That was mentioned by several people in the, you know, in the, the events that I listened to. So again, I didn't see that anything was, that was mentioned by public was changed or addressed in the bylaw.
Yeah, thank you very much through the chair to Council Vermansky to try and touch on some of your comments in regards to CAO delegation. Certainly did hear from a couple of people that that was a concern, but not by any stretch, a large number of people through our engagement. I will say that the bylaw is not dependent on CAO for the rules. As you read through the bylaw, you'll notice there are a lot of specific provisions that we looked at that we knew were important to the management of our parks and open space system. So the intent of the CAO delegation in terms of rules is really specific to more operational or site-specific matters. So looking at section three point nine, that is in addition to the rules of the bylaw. And again, this is examples of things that are very localized, that might be seasonal, that may change over time, where uses of parks. A good example of this may be the fishing off plus plus platform. So historically, that had occurred. With the new platform, there was an issue with fishermen continuing to use that platform as historically. And their lines were causing concern to other users who were drawn to the new platform as well, their lines were in danger of conflicting with the overhead power lines. I'm not really sure why that was a new concern, but it was. So rather than creating a whole bylaw saying, hey, you can't fish here and it's enforceable and going through a council process, this allows us to put those site-specific rules in place. So again, just reiterating that the bylaw is written for people to understand it is comprehensive as written. It just gives us the ability to add in those official or sorry, those extra site-specific rules where we encounter problems that do need some enforcement. In terms of other public feedback around alcohol and distance, we felt that, you know, the distance from picnic tables, if that were remitted, was kind of an operational matter that needed a lot of thought and maybe different between different parks. So a CAO delegation would be more appropriate than trying to write that into a bylaw. So that's really the intent is the high-level rules are still housed in the bylaw. But really, we were looking for those situational and more operational type rules to to rest with the CAO and his delegation or his or her delegation.
My concern is that people will not know what the rules are because it's been mentioned a few times that they'll be put to a website and the public is supposed to know what the rules are. So they may be ticketed and then they don't even know the rules at that point in time. And then they're going to be directed to the website. So it just, and the cost of all this was a big question from citizens to me, like your, you know, your signage, that hasn't been presented at all.
Council Vermansky and Amanda, that Carrie Hiltz wants to jump in a bit on this conversation too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vermansky. And just further to Amanda's comments on the CAO delegation. This, you know, in terms of without making, you know, political statements and things like that, because that's one thing that administration does not want to wade into. Any decision the CEO makes, council has the opportunity. council has the opportunity to bring forward a notice of motion at any time. If they're not happy with the decision that's made, they have that ability and that, and that's a good check-in for evaluating decisions or direction, et cetera. So as Amanda was indicating, these are basically more around the regulatory, the day-to-day operations than it is on those philosophical, political decisions. So that's just really what I wanted to say is that council always has that ability of going to a notice of motion if they're unhappy with the direction the administration goes in our program or service.
And Councillor Bransky, you also had a question about what's this going to cost, kind of like the financial?
Yes, yeah.
It does have in the, in the background or the financial implications. It says may require additional resources to achieve, and correct me if I'm wrong, Diane's, Amanda, but it says that they're expected to be minimal. And I'm assuming that, and it says your business cases and capital charges will be brought forward for council's future consideration if they're significant. So I don't know. Do we have an idea what this is costing?
Through the chair, I can speak to, we have built an implementation plan to assess those costs. At this point, this is largely a realignment of existing bylaws that exist in other, other provisions. We have existing capacity to do things like the website updates to make sure that, you know, temporary signage is in place. And we would just slowly incorporate any kind of changes needed through, through our normal budget process. So outside of potentially some incremental costs, if council chooses to move forward with alcohol in parks being kind of the only obvious where additional site signage will be required. We don't actually expect any additional costs directly as a result of the bylaw change.
Right. Thank you for making that understood, I guess. I've got Councillor Killick and then Councillor Hughes. And I was aiming for a 4:30 break, so we'll see how we are with questions at that point.
Just a couple of quick questions. I think they were addressed during committee, but just to clarify. I believe we spoke that St. Albert, the alcohol in the parks is consistent with seeing the numbers from Alberta Health Services. It says 79% of people over the age of 15 in Alberta partake in drinking alcohol. So this is not, this is already something that is widely accepted and widely known in Alberta. We're not doing anything, opening up our parks to anything that is not outside the norm and standard reported numbers. That, is that fair to say?
Thank you very much, Councillor Killick. And through the chair, we did not specifically reach out to Alberta Health Services as we shared at CLSC. This really is a values-driven conversation. Alcohol use can be seen as a positive or negative. Generally speaking, our engagement through both the pilot and again through the parks by law as a separate piece of engagement was generally in support of alcohol in parks. But we do recognize that people do have personal opinions that really influence their views. So that is why there, there is to, there is alternatives in your agenda package because it is a values-based conversation and it is almost to a personal level on whether you believe that, that drinking in the public realm is acceptable or not. So there are some options for you, but I will say that the public engagement and the pilot resulted in no significant issues. And that the public was generally in support of it from those that we heard from.
And if I could just add on to Ms. Wild's statement, we did do some regional research regarding provision of alcohol in parks or allowance of alcohol in parks. So we did have a, a presentation or a component of our presentation at CLSC was around the other municipal jurisdictions and their current assessment of that same issue within their own framework.
Yeah, thank you, Diane. And that, my question was generally that we're in alignment with what's going on in the region and generally accept that at a provincial Alberta health level as, as well. So I'm, just wanted to make sure that we're, we're still on, still correct in that assumption. The, the other one we had a bit of discussion around was the designation of, of alcohol consumption in picnic areas. The trial was for three picnic areas and the question would be what, how, how do we see that expanding as a designation of picnic areas? If, if this bylaw goes into force going forward?
Thank you very much for that question, Councillor Killick, and through the chair. At this point, we are still working on what, should the pilot, or sorry, should the program move forward either as a pilot and alternative one or as recommended in the bylaw? We would work on a program. I believe our current thought is to start fairly small, so fairly consistent with last year to give us more time, the way the bylaw is currently recommended. With the CAO delegation, we can continually revisit the designated sites and the rules around that. And that gives us the flexibility to, to kind of learn year on year what works and what sites don't. We do know from other municipalities, different approaches and, and different things that we can pull from, as well as we develop a program that would be approved by this CAO for this year.
That's great. I just want to make sure again, the public is aware that we're just not opening this up willy-nilly. It's a controlled, targeted, if you will, rollout. So thank, thank you for that clarification.
Awesome. All right, Councillor Hughes.
So just to go back to the, the rollout, how will the public know which parks, because they're going to see this and say it's available in parks? So the communication of how will they know it's, it's not, then it is, as we expand it? How are, how are we going to make sure the public actually even understands that this is not being broadly put out?
Through the chair to Councillor Hughes, it's an excellent question and is a learning that was shared to us with the City of Edmonton and the issues they had with their pilot through 2021, was communication is kind of king. So that would be a critical component to, to a program that we design is a really good communications campaign. Provincial legislation requires that we have a signage onsite that maps out where consumption is permitted, the hours of consumption. So we do have some provincial requirements for onsite signage. So, you know, as we develop that education campaign and that mapping, we'll provide that both online and onsite. And through all of our outreach channels that we have to make sure that it is super clear because you're absolutely correct in that communication is, is going to be critical. And that is something that has been shared by our regional partners as well.
So are we going to be putting signs in the parks that don't allow it? Because like you can say yes, but then they may not read it to know that it's not a no. Like we're not, you can say which one has it, but that people are going to assume that they all have it unless they're told otherwise. So are we putting up communications saying which ones are not going to be allowed?
Yes. Through the chair to, to Councillor Hughes. We are still, as I mentioned, awaiting council's decision on this, so we haven't quite gotten that far. Typically, we do not sign areas where something that is kind of the status quo is the status quo. So if drinking is generally not allowed in parks or only allowed in select parks, we don't sign them. That isn't to say that in major parks where drinking wasn't permitted and where people may expect to be safe. We don't allow drinking at Woodlands as an example, because of the skate park and the spray park, that it wouldn't be prudent to put signs up there. We just haven't gotten that quite that far. And we have 114 park sites across the city. So trying to manage the quantity of signage. And again, relying on some of those channels that we have to communicate with the public, not just through onsite signage, but to prepare people ahead of time and, and make them as aware as we can.
So what is the intention by the end of the year? How many of the parks will be permitted?
Through the chair to Councillor Hughes, we do, would need to work through that with the CAO as suggested in the bylaw or through a pilot program if an alternative motion were brought forward. But I believe our intention would be to, to stick fairly close to the sites that we trialed last year to allow ourselves to ease in to any kind of program and really assess from a principle standpoint where we would like to permit alcohol consumption and where we wouldn't. Focusing in on those three large city parks.
Okay, so we're just going to be keeping it to three this year? Is that what I'm hearing?
That is our current thinking. We will confirm that through the CAO, through, through a, a program plan as we know council's decision.
I think this is an example of our concerns about leaving everything to the CAO. The Facebook, you mentioned that the advertising campaign to reach out to the public was through Facebook and there was 24,000 impressions or something like that? How many click-throughs did we actually have from that campaign?
Yeah, thank you for the question. So I will just preface my comments that Facebook was where we saw the most reach. But I will say that we did a number of different outreaches. That was by, not by any means our only outreach. We provided information through City Lights. We provided information on Facebook, on Twitter. We had our Cultivate the Conversation webpage active. The Chamber of Commerce sent out information on the parks by law through their mail-out, which I understand is somewhere in the neighborhood of 2,000 email addresses. So it's not just one. From that Facebook poach, sorry, from the post on Facebook, my apologies, I closed the piece of information that I had ready for that question. Spare with me for one moment. Sorry, Councillor Hughes. My apologies. So just pulling up the information that we received. We don't just post on Facebook, generally speaking. Our sponsored posts go to a target. So from the followers of, that receive those sponsored posts, we have more than 3,000 St. Albert residents, another 2,000 or so from Edmonton, another couple hundred from Moretonville and then less for, for communities as you move further away from St. Albert. I'm sorry, I'm just going through our, our messages from our comms folks who unfortunately couldn't, couldn't make it today. Is that they, we target our current audiences as well as their friends. So those that follow us and then the Facebook posts do get targeted to the friends of those who follow us because it increases the likelihood of our audience seeing it as well as friends and family who may have similar interests and values. So what we're measuring in that 24,000 is reach, which is the number of people, not the impressions. So it's not one person seeing the same ad 20 times. It is, the reach is the 24,000. Sorry, I'm trying to figure out all the things he wanted me to make clear and
No, I just, so it just
It, it's, it wasn't just Facebook. That's one aspect of the outreach. And kind of why we came to the conclusion that we did, that residents were generally aware of what we were trying to do and what, why we wanted to talk to them. I just chose not to engage. So we had 361 residents that were registered to our Cultivate the Conversation page that did visit the Parks by law page and, and only 30 of those, or 20, 30, sorry, 36 of those chose to engage with us to give you kind of a sense of kind of the, I don't want to call it disinterest, but those that, there weren't very many that chose compared to the overall number that we're aware.
Was the alcohol lumped in with the parks by law or was it a separate survey?
Thank you for the question through the chair. We ran two. So the first was a standalone alcohol in parks pilot. So we had a Cultivate the Conversation page. We had a couple of different Gazette articles. We also had QR codes at each table where alcohol consumption was permitted. So you could just scan and get to the survey right when you were there at the park, kind of to capture people in the moment. So we had that engagement. And then we also had engagement through the parks by law. So we had two, two rounds for that specific piece.
Okay, specific to the alcohol. So it appears that what I can't figure out is what the brush was. Because when I look at the survey results, 15 people said they were in favor. We have 67,000 people in our community plus. 15 people said they were in favor and we're now moving it forward in spite of just not hearing from the majority of the public. I can't say 15 people is anywhere near a majority representation or even a reasonable sample size. So I'm just trying to figure out why we are recommending to prove this forward, not to simply extend the pilot based on a support of 15 people.
Yeah.
Do you want me to add in, Amanda?
Oh, sure, if you have something to add.
Sure. Through the chair to Councillor Hughes, we also have, you know, tracked complaints we've gotten through public operations and our colleagues in municipal enforcement. And we really haven't seen any concerns that were registered as of the pilot from last year. So we were using a number of inputs to really make that recommendation forward. And for administration, we were wanting to give options for consideration, but needed to provide one as kind of the component of the agenda backgrounder that you've gotten on this topic. We have provided alternatives for your consideration. If you, if you would like to, Amanda's point, like to consider this as a value-based discussion and provide us direction to go forward with the pilot for another year, that's an opportunity for council to provide direction to administration as well.
And one more question then. Okay, two. There's going to be costs for the signage. So we can't say there's no costs involved. How much is all this signage going to cost for 114 parks?
Through the chair to, to Councillor Hughes. With the temporary signage, and I say temporary, they're, they're laminated signage, we spent less than $500 to do the three sites. To do permanent signage, most of our signs across the city are upgraded to our new signage standard, which allows us to update them actually a little bit simpler for the most part. That being said, I don't think we'd ever propose all 114 sites to have additional alcohol-specific signage at that, as the cost would be astronomical for the, for the value of that people would get from, from having that information right, right there. We would, and as suggested in the background report, as we know more, we can continue on with temporary signage for the next year or so until we solidify the program and learn more. And then we would bring forward a, a project charter for any incremental costs that would come out that would be substantial based on what we learned from any pilots. So at this point, I would be hesitant to give you a number. But I would suggest that we would never sign all 114 sites with brand-new alcohol is permitted or not permitted signage and less so directed by council.
Okay, so today, the, the motion, yeah, apparently the motion that committee had is not being referred forward. So is, is council approving the actual full bylaw today or is it?
Sorry, you got cut off there, Councillor Hughes.
Yeah, sorry. Is the, is council approving the full bylaw today or is it to bring forward the bylaw?
I think Councillor Mackay's intention is to put first reading on the floor.
Okay. And then, but there's three readings, right? So are we doing all three today? That's the intention?
If, if we get unanimous consent.
Okay, great.
All right. It is little past 4:30. Almost been three hours in our chairs. Let's stand up. Can we come back to it? Okay. And so dinner is here, so why don't we reconvene shortly after 5, 10 after 5? That gives us a half an hour. Sound good? All right.
Just about 10 after. See if I've got my other three councillors back. I've got Natalie, thank you, and I've got Shelley. And is Sheena there? Sheena did tell me that she was having pet problems and she might be jumping in and out of the meeting. So hopefully it's nothing too serious and she'll be back joining us soon. So why don't we keep going. Councillor Mackay, you've got your, oh, there's Sheena. Good. You got your hand up, I guess you could call it for
So I'm assuming without having municipal enforcement here that they probably went through the parks fairly regularly or as duties permitted. And didn't come across any challenges or difficulties that required enforcement. Is that safe to comment on?
To Councilor Mackay, that is my understanding. We have had municipal enforcement engaged in the Parks Bylaw project. And the Alcohol in Parks project from the beginning, and they were not aware of any, any concerns at all.
Thank you.
That's all you have for questions? All right, I'm seeing no more questions. So Councilor Mackay, I'm going to turn to you. To see if there's a motion that you want to put on the floor.
Yeah, no, I'll bring forward the recommended. Recommendation from the committee. And I'm not sure whether legislation has one in relation to an actual motion, but I can make it up on the fly.
I do believe they do. It's just first reading of bylaw zero seven.
There it is.
Two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you. Sorry, my pizza made my mouth quit working. That bylaw zero seven slash twenty twenty-two be read a first time.
Okay, I'll accept that motion and I'll allow you, Councilor Mackay, to have your opening comments.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm, I'm going to be pretty concise here, I believe. I am, you know, most of the comments. Came from questions as are related to it. I mean, this is a bylaw that's been. Pretty much been on the books since nineteen sixty-five, as administration has identified both in committee and then again tonight. That this is kind of being something that is not only in our policy to be reviewed, but also just makes good sense based on just. To modernize it with the realities that our, our community is growing and. That our park use is up particularly even we saw. In the pandemic, we saw how valuable our parks were. So. I, I, I'm just putting this forward based on the fact that, that the. For the, you know, the, the, the need of modernizing it, the, I mean, I guess if I can speak to some of the consultation. I mean, it wasn't for lack of trying. I mean, our administration certainly tried to get feedback as much as they could. I mean, administration talked. About all of their efforts in relation to not only getting public feedback on the bylaw and also. The drinking, allowing alcohol consumption in the parks as well. So I just, I believe it's just appropriate. It identifies some of the challenges that administration was having in relation to. The existing bylaw that it was clunky, that it had a whole, a bunch of other bylaws that were tied in. It now provides some flexibility that we can establish rules. It can actually provide for the increased number of events. And potential for businesses that we have in our parks. So. And also I think the one that I identified is around really adding a section that's going to. Address some of our environmental protections and concerns. And so, I mean, I, I. I'm hundred percent behind moving forward and addressing and modernizing our parks by law.
Awesome. Thank you for that, Councilor Mackay. I'll open it up to members of council. Those committee members that were at the Community Living Committee. We've, we've heard your comments, so let's try to not repeat them and keep your arguments concise because your positions are already quite public. So let's see, I've got Council Broadhead, Council Killick, and Council Hughes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I reviewed the, the bylaw, I, I believe that it's a. Reasonable update to the Parks Bylaw. Certainly, there's changes and St. Albert is trying to modernize how they deal with. Our parks amenities and to bring the, the bylaw, if you will, into the twenty-first century. I appreciate the comments around, you know, perhaps the, the feedback that was heard. Might not have been reflected, although it's interesting to hear that it, by and large, the. The bylaw was accepted and largely supported. So if you've got one or two that say nay, which, which direction you go. The, the direction supported by the majority of people or by a couple who, who raise a comment. In the end, one thing I found about St. Albert is if the community at large really doesn't like something, they tend to show up in, in. Numbers. And tonight was an example. We had a group of individuals who, who had a strong feeling about a potential. Proposed project in downtown and they put in a lot of work and effort into making a counterproposal and they came out. En masse tonight to make their feelings known. And I find that St. Albert, when, when people are in disagreement with something that council or administration is doing, we hear about it. In this particular case. There's virtually none in terms of the alcohol in the park. We didn't have any complaints. There was no. Requests for enforcement and what I believe that indicates is a general acceptance. By the community for the measured introduction of alcohol use in the park. But it also indicates, I think, that the citizens of St. Albert do it responsibly. And to that end, I believe that the updated bylaw speaks to. The requirements and the, and the, and the desires of our community. So in that respect, I'll support it.
Thank you, Council Broadhead. Council Killick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the safeguards that were discussed today in terms of. Rollout plan, being moderated. Gave me comfort level that this is not going to open it up to any abuses, as well as past history with no complaints or enforcement calls. But most importantly, I think the delegation of some of the details and operational steps to the C A O is consistent with. Many of our other bylaws, snow removal, street sweeping, et cetera, garbage removal, et cetera, et cetera. Dog parks. And tho- those safeguards were there. It allows administration to run things and council to take a more strategic. Role. And there's also the safeguard that if something is brought to our attention through our residents, as Councilor Broadhead identified. That we can, as a council, can come back to the C A O and ask for changes. So we have that safeguard there as well. So with those. Points in mind and, and the communication plan that was discussed, even the simple little signage on our existing signs that we have around all over the city. I think that covers everything off. And from my perspective, I'll be supporting the, the new bylaw as it's proposed.
Okay, Council Hughes. Council Hughes, you're still muted.
Thank you. I just, this was two months at off-peak times during a pilot. It was not during the peak alcohol consumption time, which should be June through August. It was after school went back in, the weather's getting cooler. So, and. The challenge I have is that we've been told that the C A O has authority to change things or proving and finding what we're getting later. But in addition, we've been told that the intention is to only have three sites next year or this summer, which is the same as the pilot. So the need to rush the pilot, I just do not understand. Because we're going to, we had three sites, we're going to supposedly keep three sites. Maybe it might expand to one more, which could also have been done in the pilot. And then gotten a much broader bit of information about whether or not people have a concern. When you're doing things at off-peak and then thinking it's going to apply for peak, that doesn't, it's not the same. So that was a serious concern. Fifteen people saying yes is also considered, in my opinion, the same as a couple. Saying fifteen people are opposed, in favor, eight are opposed does not represent a sample of anything. So what we have is we put it in place for two months at off-peak. Nobody really gave us an opinion one way or the other. We're going to assume silenced means change, consent to change, and not silence means status quo. So I'm not even sure if the public knows exactly what was involved, because if they didn't go through the questionnaire, they may not be aware. So what they could be thinking is whatever is now is fine, as opposed to saying, yes, we want to change it. So. I still do not see the value in pushing it forward with such little feedback. And considering the number of sites is the same, or supposedly going to be the same for the next twelve months. I just, I don't understand what this rush is. I just don't understand why we want to just push it forward so there won't be a problem. This is actually a really big change and saying people are shrinking, so therefore it's okay. People do lots of things in parks. That are not technically legal, but we don't change it and make everything okay. So, and the final concern I will maintain. Is that we can't say we're doing communication of saying we're allowing in parks and then not communicating in the parks that it's not allowed. People are going to assume it's in all parks. And they're not going to go back and start checking websites to see which park is okay every single time. They're going to say it's all parks and they'll tell me if it's not. It's just not, they're not going to be looking for that signage as they go into the park with their alcohol. They're going to be looking for signage saying the opposite if they're looking for anything at all. So the idea that we can communicate this by not putting out signs doesn't even make any sense to me. I don't know how the. Fully disclosed. I have a lot of concerns right now with what we are just moving forward with, without, and just assuming that it will be fine. When there, we could have gathered more information to make sure that whatever we're doing was right out of the gate.
Yep, she's frozen again. Council Hughes? Now she's muted. When she gets back, we'll see if she needs to add anything. Council Jolly, I see your hands up.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to say I don't typically attend the C S, C L S C meetings, but I made a point of attending. The meeting where this new Parks Bylaw was presented. And, you know, as always, I was so impressed with. The, the thoughtfulness and the professionalism of administration as they, you know, put forward this, you know, the end result of a really substantial project. So. I wanted to extend my thanks for that. I have every confidence that the implementation will be as thoughtful as the creation of this bylaw. So. Thank you very much and I'm happy to support first reading.
Thank you. Council Bromansky.
Just one last comment. I'm always in favor of modernization, but the bylaw needs to have clarity. So. That's the reason I will not support it. I don't believe in policing people on something that's not clear to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Hughes, you kind of froze up for the last little bit. Did, do you think we heard everything?
I got the gist. I think we're good.
I, I don't have much to add to, to the debate. I think. I, I think kind of what Council Jolly said, that this has been two years of hard work by our staff and. So it's, public engagement's difficult. But I feel like when you reach out to the public, if they, if they're unhappy, they let you know. But quite often, if they're fine, then they, they stay silent and go around their, go about their everyday business because they're happy. And so I, the, the attempts for public engagement were, were broad and, and, and very, very. They were enough, in my opinion. I think they did a great job. So here we are with a modernized bylaw that really kind of gets rid of the operational stuff out of council realm, which is, I'm always supportive of. And there will be some education that will have to take place. And you know what? People do have to take some responsibility to know what they're doing. You know, you can't have a beer at Woodlands Park now. Why would you assume you could later? Ignorance is not, what is it, Council Mackay? Ignorance is not an excuse. Yeah, exactly. And, and, and signage, you know, we have signage all over the city that says dogs on leash, dogs off leash. And, and people don't see the signs or they don't obey them. So I don't really support cluttering up our community with a bunch of signs. So. I'm going to support first reading. Council Mackay, anything to finish?
Just quickly, it's, it's always around the implementation. Implementation is always one of the challenges, but that's. Another benefit of actually allowing that implementation to occur with administration at an operational level versus at a governance level. You don't want to. Have council starting to mandate who can have a birthday party in what park. And I mean, to your point about signs, Madam Mayor, I mean, I've seen many fifty kilometer an hour signs, forty kilometer an hour signs, and I'm. Confident that there are a few people who tend to disobey those. So, I mean, I, you know, the, there, there will be challenges, but there's going to be lots of opportunities. And I think the flexibility that this new bylaw provides, not only council, but certainly administration. Will actually have way more benefits and be better utilized and better understood by the public than a mishmash of all existing bylaws.
All right, I'll call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that passes by majority with Council Bromansky and Council Hughes opposed. Second reading? You in the mood? Okay, so we do have an email from Council Jolly. So I'll get you to read second reading in and then I'll go to Council Jolly for her amendment.
Sorry, that bylaw zero seven twenty twenty-two be read a second time.
Awesome. Okay, Council Jolly. That's your proposed amendment?
Yep, that Schedule A fines is amended by changing the fine for cut down a tree from five hundred dollars to one thousand dollars.
Council Mackay, I might do it this way. Council Mackay, are you going to take that? Could you take that as a friendly and I'll make sure that the rest of councils will care about?
Can I ask you a question? Not of Council Jolly. I will take it as a, as a friendly.
Does anyone oppose having that as a friendly? Okay, seeing none, so we don't need to vote on that one. We'll just take it as a friendly. Do you have another question?
Well, based on the fine going up to a thousand dollars.
Okay, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead. Yep.
I just, administration or Mr. Viflar, in relation to the way the, the city of St. Albert deals with their penalties, specified penalties. This is potentially a thousand dollars only each time. There's no, or does it move up? Like, so a second offense would be two thousand dollar fine or third offense be ten thousand dollar fine?
I think that has to be laid out in the schedule.
Through the chair, the, the bylaw, as it's currently written, the, the fine section does not have. Automatic escalation for second or third offenses. It does have a provision that for an ongoing offense, every day the defense continues as a separate offense, but it doesn't have the. You know, the escalating. However, that said, any judge or justice of the peace hearing evidence that the person has done this for a second, third time. Always has the option to jack the fine up. So I, I don't think we're any, 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 any concerns with that.
All right, thanks. No, I just was saying, I mean, potentially if you had somebody go in and remove multiple trees from a park. Would that be one thousand dollar fine for one-time offense or would that be one thousand dollars per tree?
Well, through the chair, at the risk of seeming to duck the question, that's a very fact-specific thing and I would want to. I would want to look at the facts if I were the prosecutor to see whether I'd want to charge multiple offenses or just, or just one. It, it, you can understand that, I think. It's, it's very fact-specific.
No, fair enough, fair enough. I was just maybe raising the point. Anyways, no, I'm fine with accepting it as a friendly and that's.
Awesome. All right. So that leaves us with no more questions. We don't need to vote on the amendment. So now it reads. Second reading of bylaw seven as amended, right? There we go. Bylaw zero seven be read a second time as amended. Anything further on this?
No.
All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed and that passes by majority again with Council Bromansky and Council Hughes opposed. Can I look to somebody for unanimous consent? Council Broadhead, are you good with that?
Okay.
I move that unanimous consent begin per consideration of third reading of bylaw seven slash twenty twenty-two.
All right, any comments? Seeing none, I call for the vote. Voting's closed, sorry. And that, we do not have unanimous consent to move on. Council Bromansky was opposed, so we will have to do third reading. May second. Thank you. Okay, we'll put that on the agenda. Okay. Council Mackay, another one of your. Committees' recommendations, so the, the committee do not support staff's recommendation, sorry, with seven point eight, the Sturgeon River Valley and Natural Areas Protection bylaw. Do you want to go into opening comments on, on the topic or do you want to go to administration?
Well, I mean, I, I mean, I guess I can give a summary based on, based on the feedback of the conversation and maybe there's not a requirement. This was brought forward by administration based on their belief that the initial motion put forward by Council Hughes as it related to the protection of. The Sturgeon River as a separate bylaw would be covered in the recently approved M D P. And a number of the principles and policies that were contained in that. After a lot of questions and discussions. I think the belief of the members that voted in. I guess it would be in negative of the, of the administration's recommendation was is that, you know, there's no timetable. There's, there, this could come back and in a different form or it could come back as part of. Included in the M D P or could be coming back in another time or there was just really no rush and there was no harm if it's sitting as a placeholder. And, and I might just look to Council Hughes for additional information around that because I don't want to. Speak out of turn in relation to the exact intent.
Okay, yeah. Council Hughes, do you want to add to that?
Can you hear me right now, Madam Mayor?
Reach again.
Okay, is it, my internet's all, I don't know, my internet's going weird on me right now. Yeah, I just, I, I felt, and it was supported by the committee. On a three to one that, you know, there, while there is an M D P, obviously we had an update. There is certainly the opportunity to see if there will be something else that needs to come forward and we have that. And coming forward for additional protection when there has to be specific details. And men said that they're planning to do more refinements about how we're going to implement the M D P. And refinements covered in a way of a protective bylaw and that way there's just clarity for all parties. There's no deadline or a specific date for when this has to be done. So we just leave it on the books and then administration, when they finish. Materializing how the M D P will look as far as implication, implementation goes, then we really should have the discussion of whether or not additional. Clarifications necessary or not. But I think it's actually premature to say that it isn't necessary, especially considering our river valley is just so important. And I think that having a bylaw that was much more specific about exactly what can be done and can't be done, that's similar to Edmonton's. Would show the value that we actually have for this and also provide clarity for both residents and developers. So. The committee supported that by majority and that was why I felt that it didn't need to be held at this moment.
Council Hughes, you kind of broke up for a sec. So what, what would be the trick to, to actually have our staff start working on this?
You know, once they do the implementation, like they, they said they're going to have specific details about implementing the M D P. Then when that's done, we can see if there is a protective bylaw or there are specifics that would be applicable. So it could be a year or two from now once everything's done. This isn't to go on the top of their desk, it's to go on it. After we start to implement things, they see if there's whether or not there is a, an ability for a bylaw to be formed. But Edmonton has a bylaw and we don't. And I do feel that their clarity in their bylaw gives both residents and developers much more clarity. Than what we have, which is stuff like adequate distance, which is subject to interpretation.
So, yeah, Council Mackay and Council Hughes, I think what we really need, Kevin and, or Carrie and his staff need is, is some direction. If this is not rescinded. And, and by the way, as with the previous motion, if any member of council wants to bring forward the administrative recommendation, they can today. But I guess my question to, to you two, and then maybe I might have Adrian respond, is. Are you proposing that we revisit? This motion? In a year after the implementation plan for the M D P? Or, or after the implementation of the M D P is done, they just start working on the bylaw? Or is this going to come back to council? To see if we actually need it? Because what I heard in committee is that everything that, what we're trying to achieve is addressed elsewhere. And this was going to be a significant amount of work for our staff and money. So. Council Mackay.
Yeah, sorry, I, I'm just maybe, Madam Mayor, and to your last point, I mean, and maybe we can. Confirm it through Mr. Slot. But he did say at the end that actually they, he could take it away. And, and that, you know, there was, I mean, he was just kind of bringing it forward at that particular time, but my. Recollection is, is that administration felt that they didn't, they didn't need to move forward at this particular time, but I, I can take your point about maybe potentially having a timeframe or a trigger. That would actually bring it back so that administration would have something. So I'm, I'm not sure. And again, I look to Council Hughes if, if she wants to put forward.
I see Mr. Hiltz wants to jump in here. Go ahead.
I thank your worship and to members of council. I think where the trigger for administration would be the completion of the L U B, that new bylaw.
Yeah, that was.
And so, you know, if it would be a year after the L U B. If that would be acceptable, then we would be able to have the M D P and the L U B completed and then be able to work through those details.
This is Council Hughes's motions.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I'm just, I'm just trying to.
I mean, I look at it this way, if we leave it on the books and they bring forward an L U B and it's on the books, they have that as the background thought process. If they can incorporate it into the L U B. And then we say, look, we've covered it all, we got specifics, awesome. And if they come back and say there's a few other areas that we could tweak, it doesn't have to be a two-hundred-page document. It could just be specific things if we need to relate to the map or whatever else that needs to be filling in the gaps. So I'm not putting any deadline on here because I'm not saying it has to be done this time. It's already four-plus years since it was brought forward. So I, I do believe patience, I have demonstrated extreme patience on this and I'm not asking for it to happen tomorrow. I'm just saying that it needs to be, that bylaw needs to be brought forward in some way, shape or form, whether it's incorporated in the L U B or incorporated after the L U B. We need to recognize that the River Valley area was, I mean, four years ago, there was a lot of misinter, a lot of. Different opinions about what level should be protected and how, what the setback should be, et cetera. And you can say it's mostly developed, but it's not all developed and it can be redeveloped. And those type of things need to have clarity for everybody. So that we don't have residents that interpret one thing, developers interpret another, administration and council caught in the middle. So I'm just saying, keep it there and see, I don't feel it needs to die completely yet. Let, let's see if there actually is something there that can either be put into another bylaw or put in as home bylaw. That's it. And if they come back after they do both in two years and say, we think we've got it all covered and we've got specifics, awesome. And if they don't, we have a bylaw here they can bring forth. I just don't see the harm.
Okay. Just going to test the waters. Is anyone willing to bring back administration's recommendation today? I'm seeing none. So I'm thinking. A year from now, when the L U B is done and I, I think we need to have a workshop. If, if that, I think that's, everyone's interpreting what this could be very differently. And if, if Adrian is thinking that it's already addressed elsewhere, we don't need to do it, then his interpretation is obviously different from others. I'm looking at the Edmonton plan because it keeps coming back. Unless it's been re-updated, I, I see it nineteen eighty-four. It's ancient. So I don't even know if they're using this bylaw, if it's addressed in other of their planning documents. So, you know, it would be nice to have a bit of comparison of what the Edmonton. Bylaw is achieving and if it's. So, you know, it would be nice to have a bit of comparison of what the Edmonton bylaw is achieving, and if it's working, what council sees the purpose of this bylaw being, because I think there's some confusion. Because I believe a lot of the original intention has been addressed, but if we want to make it bigger and better, maybe a year from now we have that conversation, does that sound like a plan?
No, I think that would be a great idea, and then well, planning also to walk through maps that they have, of what can and cannot happen along the riverbank as it stands right now.
Sure, and in the meantime, you know, Council Hughes, you just had a long list of things that you would have liked to see, you know, let's get these ideas into Adrian's inbox now, so we can just start building a file on what this could look like.
Your worship, I think Adrian wants to cut in here.
Adrian, jump in.
Yeah, if I can, so maybe it would help just to get a little bit, a little bit further understanding. I know that we've been talking about whether it can be simple or not, and I guess one of my questions is whether council would want to see something in the future, or I guess, based on the assumptions right now, whether they would want to see something like, that's just a graphical line, or a line in policy? Because I think Edmonton and Lethbridge have top of banks, you know, based on the slope stability, et cetera, which takes some extra studies and some dollars there. But I can show you just basically what we have as far as developable in the River Valley right now, just as, maybe to help create like, just a little bit of discussion or some thought between everybody here, so that I can get a little bit of direction, if that's okay?
Sure.
Okay, so. Is everybody able to see that, the aerial photo?
Yes, now we can, yeah.
Okay, so, just, this is just an example, so we've got the Sturgeon River Valley here, development along both sides. When we apply the land use bylaw where development is prohibited, it takes out all of this area. And then as part of this whole review, kind of what we were considering was how much of the rest of the River Valley is owned by the city, and therefore, the city would have absolute direct say about what happens. And when you do that as an example, it starts to take out a substantial amount of the land that's, it's almost all of the land that's immediately abutting the river. And if I'll just, if you can just zoom in here, my computer works for me. So in this example, you've got basically municipal improvements, parks, infrastructure, et cetera, in the River Valley. And then on the Oakmont side, this was all approved through an area structure plan, so so the limits of disturbance were essentially established during that, during that area structure plan approval, and in this case, there's actually. So, as for an example, Orchard Court, there's actually additional restrictive covenant placed on those properties as far as the development line. But if we go back to the map, going, I guess, upstream, what we, we didn't find a lot of opportunity that wasn't, that didn't already have development approved by the city. So all of, all of Oakmont, these are already able to be developed through the approval process. 250 and 300 Orchard Court was approved. And so what that means, based on administration interpretation of the MDP, is that nobody can develop, you know, anywhere within these green or blue areas. And then anything that's actually considered to be developable, they would need to submit the appropriate studies, and the developer would have to pay for and justify the geotechnical, et cetera, to be able to develop in anywhere on that, in these 250 or 300, for example, or any of these developable portions. So what I'm, I guess I'm just wondering is, would something that basically just highlights a little bit more concretely for people to see that everything within the green is already basically undevelopable to folks? Again, here's, here's one where we did, I mean, I think this was kind of a little bit of the genesis of some of this discussion, 53, 55, 57 Sturgeon. As an infill, that one has been approved for a medium density redistricting. But I guess just, I'm curious if that would help to maybe just have a visible map that would demonstrate that these green areas are all either generally developed, or have development in place, or are city-owned and therefore protected? Or if we want to start talking about regulation onto what we have already considered to be developable parcels? And this, so when we get into Riverside, again, this is the area structure plan, so none of this is developed down here yet. But you can see the floodplain is essentially the limits of disturbance in Riverside. And I think, that one's this one. Yeah, so basically, everything in the red line has already been identified as undevelopable. I did notice this, we'll have to tweak this at some point, there's part of the area structure plan that does show low-density residential within the floodplain, which cannot happen, but next time we get an amendment, we'll clean that up. So again, that's, I guess, that's just kind of what I'm, what I'm asking is maybe for a little guidance on thought, if it's, if it's just a simple line, and, or is it a line in policy, or something in between? And I guess maybe here's something for council to consider, and we'll be talking with you guys about this as we get into the St. Albert West ASP. I think a lot of people always ask, well, how much is developable on the south side of Meadowview Drive around Big Lake? And you look out there, and, you know, late in the summer, it looks like there's a lot, and if you look out there right now, the water's probably up pretty close to this line, so, again, you're, I think, I measured the distance here, it's about, I think it's 80 meters here and 150 meters down here, or something like that. But, so anyway, just looking for some guidance, if council does not want to rescind the motion about what maybe we should be considering for policy or mapping to communicate to people the importance of the valley in addition to kind of where we are with the MDP and the amount of policy that's in place there.
Okay. So, Council Hughes, go ahead.
Yeah, so, hey, and so I think that when this came forward, I mean, I have to think back like 52 months, but it was really about like having that clarity for the public as to what we're protecting. So what I'm hearing from you is that we're only protecting the floodplain areas, really, the river and the floodplain areas, and we're not protecting past that, it's park space, which I didn't realize, A, but B, kind of disappointing. I'm not sure if it's just because it's a legal standpoint, or what, that we're just saying if it floods, you can't do it, and other than that, it's fair game. But at least having that clarity of like saying, here we can have city development, which would include X, Y, Z, like ballparks or not, or picnic tables or what. And then outside of this area, development is allowed. And that way, if there is questions from the public, or the developers, or anything that is redevelopment, or even in the annexation areas, that there's clarity about what's going to be going where, I think, and it might be already in the MDP. But that's what, and if it is, what we just need to have is a separate document somewhere that people can refer to easily. So that way, there's no confusion, I guess, that's what I was looking at. And so that way, you say, within this structure, we're protecting this from development, or we're allowing this much development. Which development can be as simple as park benches, right? But that way, people understand what the development is and where, that we're going to be allowing. That's what I was.
Yeah, and that's an important clarification, because we do consider development to be things that, you know, require footings, things that require grading and stuff like that. So we would have to establish that, I did just want to note, just with the area structure plans and how developers bring those forward, generally, the areas that are protected are floodplain. You see that more so in the new areas. I guess if you look to the east, there is a significant amount of area that is park space that was dedicated as municipal reserve outside of the environmental reserve that is above the floodplain, but, so it's not, it's not all only floodplain. There is some stuff that is definitely outside of the floodplain that is protected. That was, that was area shown in the green on the map.
I think that just having that clarity, I think, is what, and like, again, I'm trying to remember back, but that's really what we're looking for, is not having residents think you can't develop here, or you can develop here, and having that line on the map, yes, and then just saying what this line means. Right, that's really what it comes down to. It doesn't have to be 25 pages, it could be two. It just explains what we, what can go where, what can we develop, and to what extent where. And if we're protecting it for flooding, that's fine, and if we say this is not flooding but still being protected, and what that means, like you can develop but only this, to this extent, like picnic tables, et cetera, then we know. And then there's the clarity for everybody.
So even like, just some sort of, an interpretation or a policy clarification document as far as the Sturgeon River Valley is concerned? Would that generally meet the intent?
Yeah.
I don't want to get into the details of what's going there, because if we're not rescinding it today, that's what, that's the topic, it's rescinding today.
Sorry, yeah, sorry.
We'll schedule a workshop for what it looks like, if that, so I don't want to get too much into that publicly in chambers, so that's not what we're here for today. So, because, you know, I have my ideas to come out of the campaign, so I'd love to, I'd love to have this workshop and talk about the river, I think it'd be great, so. But, Council Killick?
Echo your comments, Madam Mayor, that that's exactly where I was going to come from, is that campaigned on protecting the River Valley. I think that resonated with lots and lots of residents through, across all of our campaigns. And just having that clarity laid out with a map as proposed, that, and development is one piece of it, but protection beyond development, what other things can't be done in that area? Like, I don't know, camping, or fires, fire pits, or, I don't know, but I'll leave that up to administration. But I think that's what I'd like to see afterwards, start with the floodplain map, say what's protected, and then provide some guidance at our workshop to be very clear what can and cannot be done within that defined land of the River Valley.
Encouraging how, how it's developed, you know?
That's right.
Whether you're facing the river or not facing the river, whether you're required to put in, you know, trail systems along, you know, the tram. Like, when we did the, when we did St. Albert Trail, we required new development to put in sidewalks.
Yep.
We need to require that of any development along the trail that's outside of it. So there's a whole bunch of good conversations we could have at workshops, so I am hearing workshop, and I'm hearing no motion on the floor on this, so we're just going to keep going, is that good? I see no hands up, all right. Good conversation, and Adrian, so you don't really have to worry about the clarity at this moment, because we'll give it to you at a workshop in a year's time. So you can, you can sleep tonight.
Thank you.
7.9 was on consent, I'll read it. Oh no, that was just the draft minutes and the package from the CGI committee, but we did have a motion coming out of CGI, that was 710, and I will read it. It says that the budget for project number 42042, for which is Ray Given Drive Improvements, based on project charter N074, be increased by a total of $2 million, and that the increase in budget be funded through $500,000 recovered from received payment from the city of Edmonton, and 1.5 million from debt under the Boring Bylaw 182019. And number two, that the budget for project number 419421, North St. Albert Trail Quarter Management Implementation, based on project charter N070, be increased by a total of $5,500,000, and that the increase in budget be funded through $500,000 recovered from received payments from land drucks, and $5 million from debt under the Boring Bylaw 92019. So we can, we can have motions over $10,000, but we can approve 7.5 million on consent. All right, 8.1 and 8.2 were done, we're on 8.3, which is Trevor Dooley, Alberta Municipalities 2022 Resolution Submissions. Trevor, thanks for holding out with us.
Yeah, oh, good afternoon, great, good evening, Mayor Heron and council. So I'll be presenting today's item, but I'm joined by Laurie Scott, our affordable housing liaison, and Marty Lee, our manager of FCSS and counseling support. The purpose of this report is to provide council with potential resolution sponsorship opportunities for the Alberta Municipalities Annual Convention that takes place September 21st to 23rd this year in Calgary, solicit feedback on potential topics, and to discuss council's preferred approach for this year's resolution session. Resolutions, as council is aware, are a way for municipalities to identify common issues requiring actions by the provincial government, and add the weight of Alberta municipality's support and advocacy efforts. Resolutions also help to guide Alberta municipalities advocacy priorities, and the deadline to submit resolutions for this year's convention is May 31st. City council has a recent track record of either sponsoring or seconding other municipalities' proposed resolutions that were identified in council's agenda report. At this time, city administration is seeking council direction on the preferred approach or approaches for this year's convention. Those being, number one, sponsoring resolutions, so administration will need to prepare these for council review and approval prior to May 31st. And we've identified two potential topics for council's consideration, those being the equitable provincial charitable gaming review, and provincial expansion of the temporary rental assistance benefit. And council may identify other potential resolution topics as well. The second approach is to second resolutions of other municipalities, and at this time, administration has not been approached by another municipality in this respect, but council members may have been approached in this regard. And then thirdly, to take no action and do not sponsor or second any resolutions. However, council members still may speak to any proposed resolution at convention. City administration also prepares an annual report prior to the convention in September of 2022, analyzing each proposed resolution for council's consideration. So the recommendation is that council directs administration to draft resolutions for the two topics I identified for review and approval, the May 16th, 2022 city council meeting. But really, administration will draft resolutions on whichever topics council wishes to identify. So with those opening remarks, Mayor Heron, I turn the floor back to you.
Alrighty. No one jumping up to ask questions right away, so, Council Jolly, go ahead.
Yeah, just a really quick one, I'm sure Mr. Dooley or Mary would be able to answer this. Has Alberta Municipalities already, do they already have a resolution in the books opposing the replacement of RCMP with the provincial police force?
We have a RFD, which is, you know, similar to a resolution, it was passed at the Spring Leaders Caucus in March, and I don't have the exact wording, but it essentially is that Alberta Municipalities does not support the proposed model that PWC brought forward on provincial policing. But it also added in that we would be open to other models, but this particular one we're opposing. And then the Rural Municipalities Association came out much stronger, and they're opposed as well. So yes, you mean, we're working very hard on that, we don't need a resolution to get the board to work on that.
Okay, so that, like, that's kind of equivalent, the RMA one really spoke to me, so this is kind of equivalent, okay, great, thank you.
Okay, awesome. So, Trevor, I have a quick question for you about, I had sent you Mayor Thorpe's proposed resolution, and you had helped add in the piece about, so Mayor Thorpe is doing a resolution around ICFs? And Trevor added in some verbiage to their resolution to actually ask that the government make the ICFs within growth management boards mandatory once again. So, you know, for those of you who weren't here last term, ICFs are the intermunicipal collaboration frameworks. Most of them are centered around recreation cost sharing. We were working on one with Sturgeon, and then the provincial government, I can't remember what bill it was, Trevor would remember, buried me, did a quick change, and it said they will have an ICF, so they should have an ICF, something like that. So it's voluntary now. And that of course is when our negotiations really lost teeth with Sturgeon County. I've had conversations with municipalities outside of growth management boards that said if they weren't required to have that ICF, they, they would never had an agreement with their neighboring county and they needed that arbitration to get that agreement. We don't have that option. So do you know, Trevor, where Mayor Thorpe is sitting? Or should I find out? I'm going to see Janet, the mayor on next Thursday.
Madam Mayor, I don't know off the top of my head, but I could certainly look into that.
Okay. And I mean, I think because we added that verbiage, we should maybe be the seconder on that one. And I do believe they, they have lots of flexibility on getting the, the council who is the seconding to, you can go past the May 31st deadline. Councillor Mackay.
Just a question to yourself, Madam Mayor, aren't you involved with the committee that's looking at some of the charitable assistance funding? Or is that wasn't that, was that something somewhat different around?
No, no, that, that was it. So yeah, in response to our motion, I would say Alberta Gaming did undergo the, the, the work. They did the what we heard report. Since then, they're working on the recommendations, you know. Trevor and Carrie and I went and met with Len Rhodes at the AGLC on two or three months ago and didn't get any firm commitments to anything. So I think what Trevor's trying to say is, is to put that motion back on the floor, maybe rewording it would put would, would allow Alberta municipalities to continue the pressure on AGLC to make it more equitable.
Okay. Yeah. I just didn't want to have something that would be going on and then not be relevant any longer because the AGLC has already amended their.
Yeah, they haven't changed anything from what I'm aware of. Trevor, have they really made any changes yet? No. Okay.
And to your point, we brought this resolution forward in 2018 and it expired this year. So this is really keeping it on the books and essentially this review is kind of started in 2010 and has been going on since then.
Whose dog is that?
I hope it's not his baby. Not your baby, is it?
Hooping off. So, so councillor Mackay, is that something that?
Yeah, no, I think, I, I mean, I'm, I'm all keeping it on there. I just didn't want to have something that was on there if it was just going to be redundant or not. No longer valid. But I mean, if it, I mean, I don't see any harm bringing it back on. And I also, I strongly support the second one primarily because, I mean, are those other municipalities that are identified in the temporary rental assistance benefit? Are those part of that seven? Is that the, you have to be, yeah. And so I would, I would definitely propose we would, we could put that one forward.
Okay.
And I'd speak to that.
And actually, Trevor, can we even expand that motion to just talk about housing in general? Because it's the temporal, temporary residential assistance benefit. Is that the money that goes to Homeward Trust? Laurie's here. Okay.
Through you, Madam Mayor, the temporary residential, temporary rental assistance benefit is a temporary program that is given to renters for a period of up to two years. And it's for people who are either temporary lost their jobs, who are on SERB or or just need a little bit of a handout for the next couple of years. So it's, it's just a temporary program, but it ends at the borders of Edmonton and the other communities within the seven cities.
Very much like the money that Homeward Trust gets. And then I can't remember the body in Calgary that you like. So for those seven cities that get support for housing outside, like those are the seven cities. It's I'm wondering if we could make a resolution, Trevor, that incorporates the resident, rental assistance as well as the affordable housing dollars to try to push it outside those seven cities.
Yeah, we could probably try to use our magic wordsmithing and, and if it doesn't meet the intent, we can seek further direction from council.
Cool. Cause that was the only comment I had on that one.
Yeah. I mean, I, I guess I wouldn't want to, it wouldn't be either or though, I mean, I wouldn't want to take money away from the other municipalities either, but I just think it should be.
It'd be interesting to see if that passes.
Well, that, that would be the, that would be something that automatically comes into my mind. The, we would, we would get a little bit of a kickback from the other seven municipalities.
Yeah. We'd have to somehow say that we want the provincial government to expand the pot. So that money goes outside the seven cities, but doesn't affect the seven cities.
And actively seek one to second.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be good. If one of the seven cities seconded on our behalf, that'd be great. Okay. I'm seeing support, Trevor, for the two that you suggested, but is there, and Natalie brought up policing. Is there any other topics that we need to pressure? And of course ICFs. Is there any other topics we want to push the government on? Anything on transit? Permanent transit funding? Okay. He said the advocacy plan is well underway. Councillor Hughes, Councillor Manceky, do you have any issues that you want to get on the floor?
I'm just, I'm not sure about the MSI, just the cut to the MSI and whether or not we should be asking for a more equitable share, especially as oil prices go up, the MSI is not reflecting that. So I'm just bringing it up because that may be something we may want to put forward is we're having a pretty serious cut.
Trevor, you know what would be on that front with LGFF would be asking the province to amend their formula such that the pot of money grows on a one to one ratio with the provincial economy instead of the, the point five to one ratio. That'd be a good one.
Yeah.
Does that conflict with the LGFF working committee that, I mean?
No, the LGFF working committee is how we allocate the pot of money. This would be about growing the pot of money. Yeah. That's a good one, Sheena.
Problem.
And Albert's going to be like the king of resolutions if we have this many. All right. So Trevor, the motion in front of us on in the agenda package was to, to do draft resolutions on equitable and charitable gaming as well as the temporary residential assistance benefit. Can we add in two more?
Yep.
Few more? Oh, we're, sorry. We'll add in wordage. I don't want to, actually, I don't want to wordsmith this motion. Can we say, and, and additional conversations at council or something like that? I'm looking at you, Cheryl. Okay. Are you drafting something? Okay. She's drafting. Trevor, when the, when the previous government was in power, was there LGFF allocation a one to one ratio with, with the economy? Do you remember?
I, I can't remember off the top of my head, but I do know we sponsored a resolution some point in the last decade regarding a commitment to provincial municipal revenue sharing. That so that one would also be expired, like this, this would have expired a few years ago. That I would say, yeah, the intent of that probably was never, never enacted.
Never met. No, exactly. Okay. Do we have something? Oh. Okay. So how does that look? Is it in the chat too for everyone else? Okay. Councillor Mackay, you want to make the motion?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
If it's that council direct administration to draft resolutions for the Alberta municipalities annual conference on the equitable provincial charitable gaming model and the temporary rental assistance benefit and additional council discussions at the April 19th, 2022 council meeting for council's review and approval at the May 16th, 2022 city council meeting.
You can have your work cut out for you, Trevor. All right. I accept that motion. Go ahead, Ken.
No, I think we've already had the discussion.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments? Actually, this is the first time, Trevor, I think you've ever brought this to council, it kind of preemptively to see what we were thinking. And I think that's a great idea and I want to see this done again in the future. So thank you for the report and your, and your initial thoughts on what we should be doing. And thank you, council, for the other ideas. Anything to close, councillor Mackay?
No, thank you.
Okay. Call for the vote. Voting's closed. Passes unanimously. Okay. So nine point one was on consent because it was a first reading. It reads that this is Jensen Lakes area structure plan. So that public hearing on biolaw 47, 2021 be scheduled for May 16th, 2022. And the public hearing on biolaw 48, 2021 be scheduled for May 16th, 2022. And I do, do think we got the EMRB approval letter today. So that was good. Nine point two was on consent. Oh no, this is when we pulled off a consent. So this is about the advertising biolaw and the reason I pulled it off was just to get a date for the public hearing in there. So do we have a new motion to read? Okay. Can we see it? All right. Can somebody make that motion? Councillor Broadhead, thank you.
It was there.
It was there.
Was there?
I've, I've got it here if that's helpful.
You have to be really quick with your answers.
There we go.
There we go.
That, that bylaw, zero eight slash 2022 advertising biolaw be rest a first time and that a public hearing for biolaw eight slash 2022 be set for the regular council meeting on August the 15th of 2022 commencing at 3:00 PM.
Excellent. Anything to add to that?
Oh, no matter, Mayor, this is, was on consent, but we've had to add the date and so that's been done.
Okay. Call for the vote. Voting's closed. That passes unanimously. Nine point three, our ghost agenda item. Neighborhood Plan Bylaw. And we have Sajid and Lindsay speaking to this. And there they are. Oh, Christine, is there not Lindsay? There's Lindsay. Okay. Go ahead. Who's making the presentation?
I'll start, Madam Mayor, Sajid here.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm just going to share the presentation and get started. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sajid Safad and I have my colleague Lindsay Francis joining me today. Thank you for joining us. Today, Planning is here to present to you the new planning framework, the two tier plan approval process as it relates to the Neighborhood Plan Approval Bylaw. Through the Green Tape Initiative, the city of St. Albert is looking for ways to streamline and find efficiencies in administrative procedures which impact land development and investment in the city. This project also stems from an Urban Development Institute request to explore efficiencies in the area structure plan approval process. Planning has been working with UDI for the past 18 months on a green tape initiative pertaining to a new plan approval process. Planning has conducted research provincewide and within the region on many municipalities similar to St. Albert in population size and type of development that have adopted the two tier plan system. Every municipality applies the system slightly differently based on their policy framework, geographical and political context. Using lessons learned from neighboring municipalities, therein lies an opportunity to establish a two tier plan process with the potential to improve and streamline the existing ASP approval process. St. Albert, St. Albert's proposed new process closely resembles planning framework and governance process found in the city of Fort Saskatchewan and Parkland County. Based on our background research, we have found across the region that a two tier planning framework process has been adopted. The naming level of detail and scale of the two tier plans vary across the region. For St. Albert's purposes, we found that Fort Saskatchewan and Parkland Counties planning and governance framework best addressed the city's scope for the project. ASP plan approval process in the following municipalities are also comparable. City of Beaumont, Strathcona County, City of Edmonton, Sturgeon County and City of Red Deer. The purpose of the two tier plan approval is to reduce overall approval timelines, reduce costs to the applicant in the long term, reduce staffing time to administer, reduce referrals to regionally, reduce referrals for regionally insignificant matters to the Edmonton Metropolitan Region Board and to enable better overall alignment to council strategic goals and policy initiatives such as the new municipal development plan flourish. The new two tier plan process will apply to undeveloped areas in St. Albert that do not already have an area structure plan in place. On the map, this would be the areas shown in light gray. If there is an ASP in place, that would remain in effect. However, there would be potential to include partially developed areas into the new plan process plan. The proposed process will enable better network land use, infrastructure planning. Based on our research, we're proposing a new planning approval framework. The current process is shown to the left. Under this process, all ASP applications, including major and minor ASP amendments, must be approved by council and referred to the Edmonton Metropolitan Regional Board for approval. This process takes an average of six months to a year or greater. The new process is shown to the right where the proposed efficiency is realized by further breaking down the policy framework into an area structure plan and a neighborhood plan beneath it. These two plans will capture varying levels of detail, varying levels of detail. The proposed new process adds an additional step in the process. However, we believe that this will reduce timelines for day to day decision making. The blue shaded boxes show the parts of the process that require council approval, such as MDP amendments, ASP amendments and land use by law redistricting approvals. The green shaded boxes show the parts of the process where the Director of Planning and Development will make decisions such as the Neighborhood Plan Approval and Subdivision Approvals. If a neighborhood plan does not conform to the area structure plan, an area structure plan amendment is required to be approved by council prior to the approval of the neighborhood plan. Applications for area structure plan and neighborhood plan can be submitted simultaneously and reviewed concurrently to save time. The neighborhood plan can be approved upon council approval of the ASP. This table shows what's included in the ASP and the neighborhood plan in terms of level of detail captured and approval process. The ASP will be a policy based document that implements the policies of the municipal development plan. It is envisioned that the new ASP will capture larger areas to enable better, broader network decision making. The ASP will include policies pertaining to citywide and regional components of land use, transportation and servicing networks. The ASP, as per the Municipal Government Act, will continue to be approved by council and referred to the EMRB for approval. The neighborhood plan will be a technical document. The neighborhood plan will conform to the ASP and will contain detailed land uses and local transportation and servicing networks. The neighborhood plan will inform redistricting and subdivision applications. As the neighborhood plan must conform to the policies of the ASP, it will be approved by the Director of Planning and Development. This process is expected to take approximately three to six months instead of the standard six, six to six months to a year for current ASP approvals. Many of them Many of the minor amendments that are currently approved by council are technical in nature, not of regional significance, pertain to zoning and subdivision requirements, and hence can be approved by the Director of Planning and Development in the new process. An example of the two-tier area structure plan and neighborhood plan is shown on the map. This is the Northeast ASP and Neighborhood Plan. The yellow highlight shows the ASP area and the neighborhood plan is shown in the green hash lines. So here are some examples of recent ASP amendments that are technical and minor in nature that were required to be approved by council in the current process, but could have been expedited as a neighborhood plan amendment under the new process. Riverside Area Structure Plan Amendment in 2021 pertaining to the reduced size of one stormwater management facility in the Riverside Neighborhood. The scope of this application largely required engineering review due to the technical nature of the ASP amendment. Under the new process, this could be approved by the Director of Planning and Development. This application was accepted in February 2021 and approved by council in December 2021, effectively taking 10 months to be processed through council approval. The election break for council also caused additional delays for this application. Aaron Ridge North ASP amendment was required as the ASP spoke to specific land use districts. The blue circle on the top left shows the proposed change in both the existing map to the left and the proposed map to the right. This application resulted in an increase in overall unit count but a decrease in density changing from high-density to medium-density designation, thereby requiring EMRB and council approval. Under the new process, this would be covered in the neighborhood plan, hence subject to a quicker approval process. This application was accepted in August of 2018 and approved by council in February 2019, effectively taking seven months to be processed, including EMRB and council approval. In Jensen Lakes ASP, the amendment proposed a change in the boundary and corresponding modification to land uses to the west of the ASP area, circled in blue on both the existing map to the left and the proposed map to the right. This required referral to the EMRB even though the proposed change did not matter, did not, was not significantly, regionally significant. Under the new process, this adjustment could have been approved at a neighborhood plan by staff. This application was accepted in November 2018 and approved by council in January 2020, effectively taking 15 months to be processed through EMRB and council approval. Administration is currently undertaking and reviewing the following pilot projects. Northeast Area Structure Plan, which is a developer-led ASP shown in yellow to the top right, and St. Albert West ASP, which is a city-led project shown in green to the bottom left. These projects are being reviewed to test the flexibility to make changes to details captured in the neighborhood plan. In summary, there are many merits to the two-tier plan process. This project is in keeping with the city's Green Tape Initiative and has been supported by UDI in multiple consultations throughout this project. Adding a neighborhood plan as a technical policy will improve and streamline the current planning process. The primary efficiency would be realized through reduced requirement for EMRB and council approvals and enabling the Director of Planning and Development to make decisions on neighborhood plans. However, council will still make decisions on redistricting and land use bylaw changes after amendment to the neighborhood plan. As a result of this project, a new ASP Terms of Reference has been compiled to capture the new process, which will be available online on the city's website for the development industry. The neighborhood plan being a detailed technical plan, it is anticipated that the volume of minor and technical amendments would be approved through the neighborhood plan process. The reduced timelines would be realized by enabling the Director of Planning and Development to make decisions on neighborhood plans that are in keeping with council's approved ASPs. As such, bylaw 5, 2022 is required to establish the Director of Planning and Development to make decisions on neighborhood plans. Bylaw 5, 2022 does not allow an appeals mechanism for a neighborhood plan. However, it does allow the neighborhood plan to be reviewed by the CAO upon a decision being rendered by the Director of Planning and Development. In closing, the staff recommendation is to approve bylaw 5, 2022 as presented. Thank you and happy to take any questions.
Sure. And Mr. Hiltz, I'm going to take this as a my bad. Because this is just a recommendation coming out of committee. We did not need that full presentation for this. It's been given and I need to remember that. I thought maybe it would be a quick one for council and not the full presentation that committee receives. So, in future, I think we need to remember that this was already discussed and the purpose of committee is to streamline this and not be repetitive. So, thank you for the presentation, Sajid. But I'll open it up to questions. I think most of it was covered at committee. So, Counsel Mackay.
Just almost one of your last slides and I appreciate the refresher. Just in, I mean, I noticed that the UDI did identify it as one of their lack of, on appeal process. And I mean, in the, it says there's no appeal from a director's decision with respect to the content other than it be reviewed by the CAO. But can you walk me through that? Is that pretty much the end of it then? Or like the CEO isn't a technical advisor, so he or she will have to depend on staff and you're going to have staff making a decision, but then the CAO who may or may not be an engineer or have a background, sorry, I apologize. Mr. Flur has it. Anyways, you can see where I was going with my thinking.
Through you, Madam Chair. Great question, Counselor Mackay. So, it's a point of clarification. The way the process is designed, the initial decision-making body is the Director of Planning and Development on neighborhood plans. And essentially, it's a reconsideration process, not a formal appeal mechanism. But the idea would be that the CAO in making their reconsideration would take into account written, well, will take away in both the director's decision and written account from the applicant on what it is that they have issues with in terms of like ground for reconsideration. And then a decision would be rendered by the CAO. There is also an ability through the bylaw for the CAO to delegate that to an internal committee of, for example, a few different directors could comprise of an internal committee who would ultimately be able to make a decision. So, the point is the CAO is the official reconsideration authority, but they do have the ability to appoint technical staff to make decisions on reconsideration matters.
My apologies. I wasn't going to add to that because Sajid has said it correctly. The CAO under the Municipal Government Act has plenary power to delegate any of his authority to anyone or to any group of people. So, you know, in fact, he does it every day.
Yeah, no, and perfect. That's exactly kind of what I, the clarity that I needed. And so, good. Thank you.
Counsel Kilic. Thank you again for the presentation. Most of my questions were asked and answered in committee, but since then, something new has come up with the Edmonton announcing that they're looking at changes to their zoning. Does this keep us flexible and competitive in what the city of Edmonton is proposing? Or does it even affect what we're proposing here, which I support, by the way?
Through you, Madam Chair. This will make our process quite a bit more flexible. As I mentioned, a lot of the technical changes that come up during zoning and subdivision trigger area structure plan amendments, which then have to go through council approvals. And the bulk of the delay, as I pointed out through the presentation, is just waiting to get on council agenda. Usually that's three months just to, just to get onto council agenda. So, essentially what the new process is going to do is a lot of those technical details that come up at zoning or subdivision can be amended on the fly by the Director of Planning through the neighborhood plan. And so, the idea is that we have this ability to tweak plans to work with zoning and subdivision approvals on the fly and a lot of those. So, for example, in the event of subdivisions, those can happen concurrently. In the event of a redistricting, Adrian would have the ability to tweak the neighborhood plan, which would then make the redistricting fall in place. So, I would say generally, it would make our planning process fairly flexible compared to a lot of the council approvals triggered right now for ASPs.
Thank you. We're good. All right. I see no questions from council members at home and no more here. So, Counsel Jolly, your committee, I'm going to turn to you for the motions.
So, first one is that bylaw 5, 2022, a bylaw to provide for neighborhood plans be read a first time.
Awesome. Any opening comments?
Briefly, you know, thanks for committee for the great discussion. This was a unanimous recommendation. And it's, it's great to see St. Albert moving in a way that makes it less cumbersome to go through some of these really minor changes. So, I really appreciate the recommendation to have this changed.
Anyone else have any comments? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Voting is closed. That passes unanimously. Counsel Jolly?
That bylaw 5, 2022 be read a second time.
Anything further? We're good. All right, call for the vote. Voting is closed. Passes unanimously. Counsel Broadhead, can I get you to do unanimous consent?
Absolutely, Madam Mayor. I move that unanimous consent be given for the third reading of bylaw 5/2022.
Thank you for that. Call for the vote. Voting is closed and that passes unanimously. We can keep going. Counsel Jolly, third reading.
That bylaw 5, 2022 be read a third time.
Perfect. Call for the vote. Voting is closed and, sorry, my glasses. And that passes unanimously. All right, new way of doing business in St. Albert. 9.4 is the cemetery bylaw. So, we are looking for all three readings of this too. Counsel Jolly, I'll go to you for the motion.
Yep, that bylaw 9, 2022, the cemetery bylaw be read a first time.
Anything on that?
In debate?
Yeah, we're just giving you the opportunity.
Yeah, thanks to administration for putting this forward. This really helps us as the cemetery is now in St. Albert. It was not prior to 2022. So, I appreciate the update and hopefully this will make it a little bit easier to administer this property.
Okay, call for the vote. Voting is closed. That passes unanimously. Second reading.
That bylaw 9, 2022 be read a second time.
Call for the vote. Voting is closed. Passes unanimously. Counsel Kilic, how about you? Want to do unanimous consent? Go ahead.
That unanimous consent be given for consideration of third reading of bylaw 09/2022.
Thank you. Call for the vote. Voting is closed. That's unanimous. Counsel Jolly, you have permission to keep going.
Bylaw 9, 2022 be read a third time.
Perfect. Call for the vote. Voting is closed and that passes unanimously. Okay, 9.5 is just a first reading. And then I'll go to you, Counsel Broadhead. I know it's Counsel Jolly's, but do you want to do it?
Doesn't matter to me. Mike was there first, so.
Oh, no, that was, yeah.
Oh.
Go ahead.
All right, I move that bylaw 19/2022 B to amend bylaw 39/2021, the Edmonton Metropolitan Transit Services Commission Loan Guarantee bylaw be read a first time.
Okay, thank you for that. Any comments?
Just first reading, Madam Mayor.
All right, call for the vote.
Mayor, Mayor Hughes is trying to, I think, ask.
Counsel Hughes. Thanks, Counsel Jolly. I had a question here. So, normally we set a date for the second and third and we don't have a date here unless I'm missing something?
Well, there's no public hearing, so agenda planning will just schedule it. So, we have to go with the petition period, which is 60?
Okay, okay. Can I ask one other question then, since we're not doing a public hearing? I watched the video. I wasn't there for the meeting, but I watched the video of this. And the one thing that didn't resonate with me was why we need to increase the amount from five to seven. They just tried to say we need to increase it. There's discussion about the proportions, but I'm just trying to figure out why we're doing a 40% increase on our debt limit for this organization.
This is not a 40% increase on our debt.
Well, it was five. Now it's seven. That's a 40% increase.
Not on our debt limit, that had me.
Well, not, sorry, they're debt requests.
Counsel Broadhead. Question, root an answer for that.
Yeah, the, so they're just raising it to the maximum that the minister allowed. The funds required are actually 6.2 and the really the reason why is just to complete the service planning update that was required because of COVID.
So, it's an increase because the COVID shutdown? Is that the rationale?
Well, the reality, basically, but the service that was in existence before COVID is not in existence today. So, you have to change the implementation plan and that needs the planning, the actual tactical planning to get to that plan in place. So, which bus goes where, at what frequency, all sorts of.
So, the, okay. I know they said the payback, there wasn't a specific time, but they're looking at three to four years. Has there been any updates on the, whether or not we're going to break even on this? Are we still expecting to break even in three to four years? Not just on the debt, but on the whole organization. Sorry, am I? He's getting excited down there.
That will come out of this plan here because it'll define the actual savings, but the savings are real. When you pull buses off the street, it costs less money to do it. So, that's part of the outcome of this plan will be that financial information that you're asking for. But it tends to be net positive at the end of the day, for sure.
Okay, because we were only 70,000 before COVID, so I'm a little concerned. Okay, thank you.
All right, and don't forget, this is just first reading to get it, open the petition period. So, anything else, Counsel Broadhead?
Nope.
Call for the vote. Voting is closed. And that passes unanimously. Okay, no emergent items on today's agenda. Oh, gosh. Civic and external agencies council updates. Can we do that next week? Because I know Mr. Shaver is waiting. Can we just table that for the next meeting? Okay, somebody make a motion because that takes a while to go through. And I feel bad for Mr. Shaver. Is everyone okay with that? Okay. I'm seeing no objections from the home crew. Okay.
I do have a physical motion. I just motioned that I'm just looking for the number.
Is the word table, not table, is it? No, it's not, it's not. No, it's not the it's not table, it's postponed, right? Yeah, good. Tables from the okay, postpone to May second.
Yeah, that the civic updates be postponed until May second. Twenty twenty.
Thank you, Council Mackay. Call for the vote on that one. Because we have we have another big agenda item, which is the e-scooter, so. Okay, sorry, voting's closed and that passes unanimously. Okay, Mr. Shaver, Schaefer, are you still with us?
I'm still with you. I was actually emptying my dishwasher, but I I'm here now and I appreciate you moving the the item up.
Okay, and I don't know if you heard, Council Mackay said everything that comes to us in April has to rhyme. So you're because it's poetry month. He's stressing out. No, I'm just kidding. All right, you have your five minutes to talk about today's motion. Go ahead.
I'm going to share my screen if that's okay.
Sure.
And please let me know that you can see the.
Sure can.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I do want to let you know I've been having some trouble technically with Zoom this evening. So if I freeze, I will, what I've been doing all night, it's been happening randomly. I'll just log back in through Zoom, so there might be a delay of ten fifteen seconds as I come back on, if that happens at all. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. Chris Schaefer, Vice President, Bird Canada. Want to speak to the motion that is before you this evening. And you've got the motion on the left hand side of the screen and our response to that motion. So I've broken it into really three elements, our response, the mandatory response time. Suggested reduce that from forty eight hours to one hour. Acceptable to us. We work towards that standard and actually exceeding that standard either way. So I think that that is obviously workable. And I think I expressed as much last time when I was speaking before you, Council, the other at the time most recently. With respect to the e-scooter company cap, what I'm proposing in response is that for the twenty twenty two season this year, that we cap the companies at the twenty twenty one level of five companies instead of reducing the permitted number of companies from five to four in twenty twenty two as per the proposed motion. And that with respect to the e-scooter fleet cap, that we cap the number of e-scooters deployed to a maximum of a hundred e-scooters per the five e-scooter companies from twenty twenty one that are permitted to operate in twenty twenty two. That's what I'm proposing. And on the next slide, you'll see the proposed, what I at least, what I propose is an amended motion to the motion that's before you this evening. And I've written it out there on the top right of the screen. The underlined portion is my proposed amendment to the motion that is before you. And I provide a brief rationale. In twenty twenty one, so last year Edmonton, like St. Albert, had a had permitted an unlimited number of e-scooter companies and an unlimited number of e-scooters per company. This created some issues such as overdeployment of e-scooters in popular areas because everyone wants to be there in terms of deploying their scooters, led to issues of, you know, e-scooter clutter and what have you. So Edmonton decided, and it was actually supported, actually something I was encouraging the city to adopt on behalf of of the entire program, was to cap, and what Edmonton ultimately decided to do was cap the number of e-scooter companies at the number that operated at that point in time, similar to what I'm proposing here. You cap it at the five companies currently. And Edmonton also capped the permitted number of e-scooters deployed per company. This greatly reduced the issues of e-scooter clutter, et cetera. And I think the proposed, at least the amendment I'm proposing in front of you on the screen here eliminates the unfairness of any potential system to decrease the number of current companies from five to four, such as a random lottery. And really there, somebody's going to lose that lottery if you go that way, and they're not going to lose it for any other valid reason but the fact that their number wasn't pulled. So that's my my rationale for it. I think simply reducing the number of companies, you know, that nothing's going to change because the companies that remain can have as many scooters as they want. And you'll run into the same issue that I think the the motion here is trying to address. So I think my amendment, my proposed amendment, it there's precedent for it in Edmonton nearby. It achieves what I think the motion is setting out to achieve and does it in a way that I think will achieve what's really intended to be achieved, but do it in a fairer way and by following precedent in Edmonton. So that's it. I look forward to any questions you may have, and I'll stop sharing screen.
All right, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Schaefer? Sheena, you actually had proposed a slight change in your motion. Do you want to just let Chris know what you're you're thinking?
So, hi, Chris. So based on the background of my administration, and I think they spoke with you, the motion is I amended it to the e-scooter programs amended to reduce the mandatory response time for pickups from forty eight to two, just to be a bit more consistent with Calgary, and to limit the pilot to no more than five e-scooter companies, that's the number we currently have for twenty twenty two, with each company permitted to deploy maximum sixty e-scooters. So that's what the revised motion is based on the recommendations.
Okay, so based on that, Mr. Schaefer, I just wouldn't mind your comments about sixty scooters versus a hundred. I don't know how you many you had in St. Albert last year.
That's true, Chair. Thank you for for the question. I appreciate the amended motion. So the only differences I heard, correct me if I'm wrong, is the number of e-scooters that would be permitted per company. The you've gone two hours in terms of the response time, fine. You're keeping the five permitted companies that twenty twenty one had for the twenty twenty two season, so that's consistent. So the only change is the I had suggested maybe a hundred per company and you're suggesting sixty. So is that workable? Absolutely. I'd suggest maybe you might want to split the difference between a hundred and sixteen go with eighty. You know, that might make things a little bit more more economical for the companies that that remain, but I appreciate the intention of the the amendment. I'd be inclined to split the difference, but that's that's my two cents. And instead of.
Do you remember how many you had on the streets last year?
It would be more, I'm going by memory now without actually pulling up my documents and priming, because I don't want to do that, but I deal with a lot of cities here in Canada. It was more than that, my my memory recalls.
More than a hundred?
Correct, my memory recalls.
So a hundred would be a reduction from what we had last year.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Oh, okay. Oh, I got it. All right. I see no more questions. Chris, you might want to stick around and see how the debate goes and other other conversations, but I think that's it for you for now. So thank you for waiting again and your thoughts. So, Council Hughes, just for clarity, one more time, why don't you read your intended motion into the record? And then.
I asked admin one question before I read it, just really quickly. So, hello, Mike. You popped on for me. So the recommendation from your department was to put sixty. I understand that the industry wants more, that's great for them. What was your rationale for recommending sixty in the alternate motions?
Sure, through your worship to Council Hughes, the intention was really to try to place a bit of a limit on the overall quantity of scooters. I think that was the intention behind this, was to to remove some of the the perceived clutter. So we felt that putting a a cap on each e-scooter company and limiting it to five would would impose essentially a limit of three hundred within the community.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, I'll just read it in as as I'm thinking, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mike. That the e-scooter programs amended to reduce the mandatory response time for pickups from forty eight to two hours and limit the pilot to no more than five e-scooter companies for twenty twenty two, with each company permitted to deploy a maximum of sixty e-scooters.
All right, before I accept that, I'll open it up to questions. Did you have one, Council Mackay? Looked like you were about to push your button. Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, I tried pushing my button a couple of times. It didn't work. I guess I my question, Mr. Erickson, would be, have you contacted any of the companies around that number? Because, I mean, there must be a point at which it no longer makes financial sense in relation to that number. So I realize total number would be three hundred, which seems like a lot. But I mean, if you have five companies and they can only put sixty in here, that pretty much makes maybe makes it not profitable and and nobody comes in here. Because if you only have two companies, you still now only have a hundred and twenty scooters.
Through your worship to to Council Mackay, I might just just confirm with with Sean McCauley, our manager of business retention expansion. I know his team has had conversations with the e-scooter companies, but I don't believe that specific question was was put to them, the the viability of of sort of limiting the 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 number per company. Is that correct, Sean?
Thanks, Mike. And through the chair to Council, we didn't get into kind of the the threshold of of where it becomes not not financially viable. But if I was to look at the e-scooter deploy, the e-scooter, sorry, deployed last year, there was three hundred and thirty overall, which worked out to be about an eighty five per company average. We do understand the intention within the motion is to eliminate some of the clutter. So that is why we we kind of lowered some of the threshold per company on this. But no, to answer the question directly, I haven't spoken with each individual company to look at specific thresholds on on where it doesn't financially make sense.
All right, I guess, I mean, I understand. I mean, if if you were reading into the question around the clutter, I I understand that, and I I can see that. My comment would be would be what happens if we only get two or three, and then we're limiting them to sixty scooters? So, yeah, we've really decreased the clutter, but we've also made it just not profitable enough that they would even want to participate in the pilot. And we were potentially back in front of council on a pilot project, again, changing the terms. So, I mean, I mean, if if we've already heard that there might be a a different number, and maybe that's the number we should go at. But I mean, without having a number, without having what becomes financially viable, I I I don't know if I can support this.
Maybe, Council Hughes, instead of five companies at sixty, why don't we say five companies max? Because that's consistent with last summer and a total of three hundred scooters in the community. And they those five companies can divide that three hundred up wherever they want. I'm sure if there's five, that each takes sixty, but if there's only four, they could take, you know, like, maybe instead of limiting per company, just limit the number in the community. That might be another way to achieve this.
I mean, I guess, sorry, Council Hughes, I just got comment on that one because I don't know. I don't know if the companies even work that well together that they would apportion the community equally. So, I mean, I mean, that's not any business. I'm, I mean, you don't go to Chevrolet and say, you know, you can open a Chevy dealership, but you know what, you can only have X number of cars in the in the community.
Well, that's what this motion.
Well, no, but I mean, it identifies something based on a company representative telling us what a number would be versus just kind of identifying a number based on clutter, not on financial. And then
Yeah.
that's all. I'm I'm just concerned that potentially we end up putting so many restriction on here that actually limits the number of companies coming into St. Albert and then artificially putting a cap on when we could probably have more than if we only had three companies.
That's what I'm saying, is instead of limit per company, put three hundred in the community, if it's only three, they each get a hundred.
But you're assuming that they're going to be all working together.
Well, that would be, that would be, that would be our act dev's decision.
I'm just not aware of any financial model like that, any any business model where you would actually, I'm just not aware of any business model.
The other option, Council Mackay, is you could make an amendment to make it eighty per company or a hundred.
Yeah, you have to, I mean, I mean, I can ask friendly, but you have to accept the first one, then I can.
I'm just just giving you suggestions when you're thinking. If you did a hundred, it would still be less than we had last year.
If, but not if, yeah, potentially, yes, you're right. But we had three hundred and thirty, we had three hundred and thirty. So I would say we've we've got two numbers. We've got, we've got administration's number at sixty, which is the motion. And then we've got industry saying they could work with eighty, at least one representative.
Yeah, at least one. Okay, I'll let you think on that, and I'll go to other questions. Actually, I see no other questions, so if you're going to think, you're going to have to think fast.
Can I, can I ask one more question?
Still one question.
So, hi, Mike, again, I'm staring at you in the center of my screen right now. Did we have four companies or five last year?
Believe we had five.
Okay, we had five. Perfect. Okay, I'm comfortable bringing forth the motion. You can do whatever you want on your side, Kim.
Yeah, okay, so you're bringing it forward at five companies and sixty scooters per each. And I see no more que, oh, Council Bermansky has a question. Go ahead.
Just just one question. I believe that, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the last presentation that Mr. Schaefer said that he wanted to bring it from five companies down to four. I think that was his suggestion at that time, was it not?
I don't remember that.
He's gone.
So anyhow, we don't want to increase the number of scooters, so I'm okay with the motion the way it is.
All right, I see no more questions, so I'll accept your motion, Council Hughes. And then if Council, now he's doing it, Council Mackay is requesting to make a motion. So you make, you want an amendment?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I would just want to raise the, we've got a number of different motions on the floor, but I guess the I would raise the maximum to sixty or a V for each company. So each committee company is permitted to deploy a maximum of eighty e-scooters.
Okay, so you're changing sixty to eighty?
Correct.
Okay, Council Hughes, friendly or do you want to vote on it?
No, I'd love to have it friendly because it's late at night here, but honestly, we actually just in like, it's not a decrease at all then, because they had eighty five. So no, we're voting on it.
It's all good. You don't have to. All right, so we're going to, I'm accepting your amending motion, Council Mackay. Any opening comments on your amendment?
I I think my opening comments are related to my question around competitiveness and the potential if we had put an artificial number on it without enough information. If we're basing it only on one variable clutter versus whether or not the pilot will be sustainable, because we limit maybe only three companies instead of five companies show up because and now they're limited to only sixty, so you're automatically dropping the number down. So, I mean, I I just don't think, I think we we're in the middle of a pilot project and we've already amended it twice without identifying whether or not it works even in the first instance. So, yes, we will identify that we'll, we we will identify that we dealing with clutter and will end up having a very efficient cleanup of problem e-scooters. But I don't think it's sustainable for a company to walk in with only a maximum of sixty e-scooters. So that's why I wanted it to go up to eighty, because we have a representative to say that eighty would work in at least for his company.
Okay, thank you for that. Anyone on the amendments? Council Hughes?
Thank you. So while you look at Okatoks, they're they're having one e-scooter company of fifty e-scooters. So it's not like it can't be done with a lesser amount, number one. Number two, the scooter should be sustainable unto themselves. They shall be making money individually. But furthermore, when it came forward to sixty, Chris Schaefer did not say sixty was unsustainable. He just said, let's just split the difference. And I'm not negotiating here. I'm trying to figure what's going to work best for the community. He didn't say sixty was unsustainable. He just said he'd rather have eighty. So if it was a problem, I'm sure he would have said this is unsustainable. He did not. But if we say eighty, we had eighty five on average per vendor last year, and decreasing it from eighty five to eighty is, for all intents and purposes, the same amount of clutter as we had before. So one of the complaints was there was just too many of these things strewn around. If we're not decreasing the number of companies, then we need to decrease the overall volume to get rid of the clutter. And the other companies, other communities have limited it. So I just and if three only things are viable, then three do is viable. We're not here to make every company sustainable. We're here to make this project work for our community, minimize the disruptions of people who had issues with it, so that potentially it could be successful long term. So that's why I don't feel comfortable. We're not decreasing the number at eighty. We're just basically keeping it at status quo and legislating it that way. That's it.
All right, any other comments on the amendments? Amendment only. Council Killick?
Thank you. I think we're reducing it.
Thank you. I think we're reducing it down to sixty is, will help greatly. Moving from what was eighty-five to eighty probably won't make any difference. But the big thing that's going to make the difference on clutter is a two-hour pickup time. If there is a scooter left laying around, it's going to get picked up. As opposed to two days, it's going to go down to two hours. I think that'll have the biggest impact. Businesses will look at this. I like keeping it at five, so I support the proposal as it was at sixty.
I'm torn. I, you know, I guess my goal is to make the pilot successful. And I actually, I was going to vote against the amendment when Counselor Hughes brought up Oketoks and the fifty per. But your comment about getting them off the road in two hours, I think that is going to make the biggest difference. So I'm going to actually let free market run at eighty. That'll be my vote. And then we'll have to actually really have a good conversation after the pilot and see how we want to go forward. But Counselor McKay to close?
Yeah, actually, I was going to actually use the same. I think that, like, we already talked about, I mean, the little feedback, little negative feedback that we've got so far, is that they were strewn around and cluttered, and that they were left in front of residences. I mean, I believe even Counselor Killik had one that sat outside of his residence or nearby residence for some extended period of time. So I agree one hundred percent, by having a quick turnaround on problem e-scooters will actually be a large benefit. And whether we're talking about sixty, eighty, or a hundred, I think that's going to be the biggest issue, will be how fast are the problem scooters collected. So I mean, so I mean, you know, we're debating over even numbers without any information, which is really the root of some of my concern, is we've got a pilot project that we've only ran for like two months in fall, when you don't, isn't really the prime riding season on an e-scooter. So why, why are we, we've already dipped into this once, we're going to dip into it again. We're, we're, we're dealing with a bunch of conjecture and half comments, not full comments. If you look at the actual stats, they're very popular. We have thousands of our rides going out. We have thousands of our residents who are using them, or a lot of people are using them a lot of times. But the biggest issue for me was the lack of being able to quickly go and pick them up. So that looks like we're going to be able to get that under control. And whether we have sixty, eighty, or a hundred, it's, again, where, where, how fast are we going to pick up the problem ones? We've just reintroduced, potentially going to be introducing parking zones. So I mean, let's let this project work. We've brought it in. Let's, let's let it work, then get the data, then make, I mean, that's, we're doing everything ready, fire, aim here. Like, let's get this thing under a proper project management.
Call in for the vote on the amendment. Voting's closed. And that motion fails with, sorry, Counselor, Mayor Heron, Counselor Killik, and Counselor McKay in favor, and everyone else opposed. So we're back to the main motion at sixty. Counselor Hughes, do you have anything else? Do you have anything in debate that you want to add?
Yeah, just, I don't want to go along here today, because it's been a long meeting already. But I just, I realize that we've made some changes. I think that these are just things that have been quickly realized, that if you want this to be successful from the people who have issues, that we need to make some changes in the modification of the pilot. And these are changes that other communities realized were making their program more successful. So I just want to follow suit, so that we don't have complaints for the rest of the pilot from people, and then making changes next year, when we can make the changes this year and have a successful pilot moving forward, which will then make it easier for implementation in the event that it goes permanent. So I just, and the organization said that it will support this.
All right, Counselor Broadhead?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Given that I voted against the previous amendment, I felt I should just speak to why. Quite honestly, I thought the original motion put forward by Counselor Hughes was made in consultation with administration. And I think the, the reality of it is, is that you got three hundred, you got three hundred and sixty scooters in the, in the community. It won't make that much of a difference. And, and quite honestly, if the, if the numbers don't work for the e-scooter company, they won't be here. But somebody will, because people do use them. So I just take a look at the, at the table that was put forward here in the, in the admin report here. And it just, to me, sixty makes sense to our community. That's three hundred in our community. If you take a look at Calgary, they got fifteen hundred for a city fourteen times our size. So I, I don't think three hundred is out of the question for our community. Thank you.
All right. I see no hands up at home, and I see no one else speaking in chambers. So Counselor Hughes, anything to close? Call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that motion passes with Counselor Jolly opposed. All right, we are at information request, notice of motion, and announcements. And I know we have at least one notice of motion from you. You have three? Okay, go ahead, Counselor Killik.
Thank you. I have one IR and two notice of motions. So let's start off with the IR, and that is that the business is the business at nine, ten, and eleven Meadowview in a court, in compliance to the zoning. Is there any bylaw enforcement or other options available to address the unsightly site such as screening, et cetera? That's the first IR. Second notice motion was that administration, following the waste composition study and public consultation in Q four of 2022, bring forward for council consideration by Q one, 2023, recommendations beyond curbside education to reduce the amount of contamination contained in the green bin program as identified in the waste and diversion report dated February 2022, page fourteen, provided to council March sixteenth, twentieth, 2022.
All right, and now your notice of motion?
And another notice of motion, that recent one. I appreciate admin support in getting the final wording on this one. That administration provide the costs, timelines, and recommended funding source that will allow for the real-time webpage displaying of the solar data from ServicePlace as described in option two on IR twenty-two zero zero three by May sixteenth?
Twenty? Is that enough time? Okay.
Need help there. May...
May sixteenth?
May sixteenth, next.
Is that the, I can got it?
Right. Twenty twenty-two.
Okay, all right. Sounds good. So those are notices and motions?
Yep.
So you know what, that date might not work, because it's not even going to get, but we'll debate it on May sixteenth, right? Because it has to have three weeks? So they can't have it prepared that day? Yeah. I mean, if we're, if we're doing the motion today, we probably could have, so May sixteenth isn't going to work? Yeah. So his motion says that you have this work done by May sixteenth, but we're not even going to debate the notice of motion.
I think what we were looking at was we would, for your debate of the notice of motion would be May sixteenth.
Right.
We'd provide the date and timelines at the maze for the, on the backgrounder. We weren't able to provide them that, this quickly, to do the notice of motion for today by putting in the date. So we'd have that date for the May sixteenth backgrounder for your debate.
So I just, your motion isn't asking for all the work to be done by May sixteenth then? Sounds like it was. Where's the motion? I have it somewhere. Mike, 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 Mike.
Hope, I was hoping, I had received in the, the background information for the first IR request. They were asking that we bring a motion forward within a week. I received that on Thursday. They wanted an answer by the end of this week. So I tried to bring forward a motion that would allow administration time to answer the basic questions, not the, not have the final solution, but would give how much it would cost.
Right.
And the timeline for them to do the work later, it would, it would take longer. But to come back with that proposal, as well as in their request of bringing it forward quickly, they said identify a funding source, but that takes time, because we don't know the scope of work. So that was to give administration time to at least work out those three simple questions, and then bring it forward for the final solution.
So I'm reading the motion that was sent around today, or sorry, yesterday. The administration provide the cost, timelines, and recommendation, recommended funding sources that will allow for real-time webpage displaying of the solar data from ServicePlace as described in option two on IR, blah, 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 by, and so the only thing you change is the date. You can't have May sixteenth, because we're not even going to debate your notice of motion to May sixteenth. So you need to put in a date similar, like August or something. So if this passes, then it will say have this work done by August. You don't set the date that the motion is read. You just say the date that you want administration to have the work done. So that's, that's my fault for, so I think, well, Carrie, I think what we need to do is, if this passes on May sixteenth, when do you theoretically think you can have the work done by?
Well, this was the, this was the issue talking with staff today, was they don't know. They needed that time to be able to consolidate between environment, finance, IT, everybody, and have the, kind of a couple of group meetings to be able to figure out this date and timeline.
Well, I don't need an exact timeline. We always make motions to have work done by X, and we give you not like six months or, how about before the end of the year, or something like that?
So maybe that's, we could maybe look at is no later than the end of Q four.
Okay. Does that work for you, Counselor Killik?
Well, I guess it, I'm not sure I have an option here.
Well, you do, because when, when they prepare the work on your notice of motion, you can change it then, right?
And I won't, but I won't see that until the end of the year.
No, you'll see the notice of motion on May sixteenth.
Oh, okay, yeah, good. That, that's what I hope to accomplish.
Okay, so let's just make it for now, end of Q, what'd you say? Q four? Okay. And we can change that on the sixteenth, at your discretion.
Okay.
Probably didn't even need to put a date in today, but, okay. That's the only other motion you had? Okay. Anyone else have any notice of motions that got submitted that I need to remember?
Yeah, we have Counselor Hughes has a notice of motion, and we also have Counselor Remansky has an information request.
Two, okay, so Counselor Remansky, can you read your information requested to the record?
Okay, please provide a list of all consultants contracted for 2021 and 2022 to date unexpected for operating items and the dollar amount and brief rationale for hiring for each. The information be requested to be completed within sixty days.
And the other one?
I only have one.
That's the only one? I thought, or it was, I'm hearing from Ledge, there was two.
There's me too, Mayor Heron.
There's only one for Counselor Remansky. Okay, now it's Counselor Hughes' turn.
So I'm looking at you right now, Mayor Heron. You sent that correspondence about timelines, and so I'm thinking I'm going to hold off on putting for that notice of motion in good faith. Makes sense to you?
Yep. No problem. Okay, next thing is in camera. I need a notice of motion to go on camera for the CIO dialogue. Go ahead.
That council move in camera to have a confidential dialogue with the chief administrative officer pursuant to section twenty-four one A of the Freedom of Information and Privacy Act.
Okay, call for the vote. Voting's closed, and that motion passes unanimously. And we are not coming back out. No.